I'll turn off my cell. I hope anybody else that turns off theirs, too. Anyway, with that, go to item one, Notice of Motion to Reconsider Action. PJ, if you want, to walk us through that.
Sure. Item one is Notice to Consider a Motion to Rescind Actions Taken on April 13th, 2015, to Approve the March 23rd, 2015 Minutes of the Planning Commission Meeting for Item Number Five, PUD Review 0607. Essentially, on the 13th, PUD was reviewed, and Conditions Four and Five were amended or stated per staff's recommendation. When the minutes were brought up on April 13th for review and approval, Item Four remained the same, but Item Five was changed and expanded from that decks and/or porches be allowed with a building permit as accessory structures. It was changed to that decks and/or porches be allowed with a building permit as accessory structures to each mobile home, and are not considered living spaces unless they are enclosed and have roofs. That was not the original motion made by staff for approved by the Planning Commission. Staff does not disagree with the motion, but just for the sake of being consistent in following order, staff recommends a motion be made to rescind the approval of the minutes from April 13th, 2015. Then, staff recommends a motion be made to amend the minutes to reflect the motions made on March 23rd. And then, finally, staff recommends a motion be made to reapprove the minutes as amended.
And can we do that in one action, or do we need a separate action on each step? Probably a separate action.
I would think separate.
Anyway, in our agenda, the recommended actions are listed there. So, the first one would be recommend a motion to rescind the approval of the minutes of the April 13th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Second, we need the staff recommended a motion to amend the minutes to reflect the motion made on March 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Then, we need a motion to reapprove the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, PUD 0607 will come back up for review if the Planning Commission would like to reconsider and then expand on that condition.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we'll move on to item two, more of our regular agenda, approval of the April 27th minutes. The minutes are published in our packet. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none, had to entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the April 27th minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. For the audience, when we do approve the agenda, it's with the consent calendar items that are listed in the agenda. We'll first go to the Planning Commission to see if anyone desires to pull any of the items four through 12 of the consent item.
I'd like to pull number nine, please.
Number nine. Planning Commission, any other items wishing to be pulled by staff or Planning Commission? Hearing none, then I guess I'd ask PJ to read the consent items four through eight and 10 through 12 for the record.
Planning Commission Consent Calendar contains the following items today. Item number four, Conditional Use Permit Review 0101 for Charles and Ursula Brackett, to review a mobile home parked in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of CUP 0101 to the June 8th, 2015 Planning Commission Meeting. Item five, Conditional Use Permit Review 0501 for Kendra Larson, to review an existing cabin as a guest house. Staff recommends approval of extension of CUP 0501 with six conditions. Item six, Conditional Use Permit Review 0601 for William Rishus, Rishus, excuse me, to review a manufactured home as a permanent residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of extension of Conditional Use Permit 0601 with four conditions. Item seven, Conditional Use Permit Review 0845 for Elaine Anderson, Stephanie Anderson is the agent, to review a single-wide mobile home to be used as a temporary residence while constructing a single-family residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of CUP 0845 to the June 22nd, 2015 Planning Commission Meeting. Item eight, Conditional Use Permit Review 1029 for Dan and Beth Thomas, to review a temporary residence, a camper, on the property while constructing a single-family residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1029 with five conditions. Skipping number nine, item 10, Plan Unit Development Review 0204 Deerfield Park Condominiums, to review an existing planned unit development. Staff recommends to continue the review of planned unit development 0204 to the May 26th Planning Commission Meeting. Item number 11, Mining Permit Review 1403, Painton County Highway Department, to review excavating gravel for road surfacing. Staff recommends approval of the extension of mining permit 1403 with 11 conditions. Item 12, Mining Permit Review 1404, Painton County Highway Department, to review excavating and extracting gravel for road surfacing. Staff recommends approval of the extension of mining permit 1404 with 10 conditions.
And for the public, again, the following items that PJ just read are on the consent calendar. The following items have been placed in consent calendar for action to be taken at all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed by the consent calendar, by the Planning Commission, or staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the Planning Commission are recommended to the Planning County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to pull any of the items four through eight or 10 through 12? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of agenda with the consent calendar items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Go to item nine.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Director of Planning. Item number nine is the review of Conditional Use Permit 1416 for Justin and Cassandra Kissler. Excuse me. The existing land use right now is residential. Their Conditional Use Permit is for a double-wide manufactured home to be used as a temporary residence while constructing a stick-built residence. This Conditional Use Permit was originally approved by Planning Commission on May 27th, 2014 with six conditions. On February 9th of this year, Planning Commission approved the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1416 with six conditions. The first condition of that was that the manufactured home shall be removed from the property by the date of the next scheduled review of May 11th, 2015, which would be today. I did speak with the applicant on May 5th. He did come into the planning office and stated that he has sold the double-wide manufactured home. He is just currently waiting on equipment to move it. It is going to a different lot. He just had mentioned that the equipment, he's moving it himself, so the equipment won't be available until the 29th or 30th of this month. But I did state to him that it does need to be moved by then. He stated that it will be, he just needs the equipment, which is why staff is recommending to continue the review of this until June 8th.
Mr. Chair.
Karen.
I just had a question about the very last statement in the staff report. If the double-wide manufactured home has not been removed from the subject property by June 8th, the applicant will be required to apply for a Conditional Use Permit to allow two residences on the property. How, I mean, I don't even understand how that's possible.
I had the same question.
Yeah. Well, and that is something that we would have to look into, because I don't know how he would do so. Staff just wanted to have some sort of condition in there to hold him to having that mobile home removed by the 8th, since he was supposed to have it removed by the 11th, and now we're extending that time period again. Staff just wanted to have some sort of repercussion for not having the mobile home removed by the 8th.
Wouldn't you normally just refer it to the state's attorney for action?
We could. At that time, we could look into what our options would be.
My understanding, I had the same question Karen did, because my understanding, we can only have two residences if one's a caretaker, if it's a guest house, or a ranch hand. So, it's pretty limited. And to me, it's opening it up as saying, you know, anybody can come in for a Conditional Use Permit to get two residences on a single property.
There is a document that approved by the Planning Commission some time ago that allows 90 days for this type of situation, so someone doesn't have to get a Conditional Use Permit, spend all the money, get all the advertising. It gives them 90 days to bring a new resident in, new residents in, move to the new residence, and then take the old residents out. This is not 90 days, and we figured that because of how long the Conditional Use Permit has been in effect, it would be in harmony with that document. It basically allows the residents time to do what they need to do without having to go through the whole CUP process.
Well, and I guess, maybe I'll defer to Karen, but that's not really my question. My question is more the statement is, it seems to imply that our Conditional Use Permits allows two residences on a single property.
Right.
Oh, the implication, okay.
So, when we do review this, when it comes back up on the June 8th agenda, I would really not like to see that sentence there.
I think it should be after June 8th, 2015, period.
Yeah.
You can take care of that.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, Karen, since you pulled it? Staff is recommending continuing of the Conditional Use Permit to the June 8th meeting.
I'll make that motion, please.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That'll take us to item 13.
Good morning. Colin Insley, County Planning. Agenda item 13 is a Conditional Use Permit for Glenn and Cheryl Iverson to allow for an accessory structure, which is a garage prior to a primary structure in suburban residential district. This is in the Valley Heights Estates subdivision. The applicant has requested a Conditional Use Permit to build the accessory garage, which is directly to the east of their existing single-family residence. They own both of these lots. And they requested to build a 2,400-square-foot building, which would be a residential garage. Again, this is primary to a primary building. So essentially, what they've requested to do is build this here, so they could use it as a storage garage for vehicles, with the intent to later build a home on it. So they build it up here on the north side, northwest side, and then later build a residential, single-family residence on the property. The staff has received approximately 15 letters from adjacent homeowners, basically saying that they believe it will bring the property value down. Other than that, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 15-8 with 10 conditions.
I'll start off with questions for staff, I guess. Colin, I guess I had a question, I guess, the use of the word adjacent lot. To me, there's a right-of-way between there. It's not adjacent. It's like saying your neighbor two doors down is adjacent to you. To me, the public right-of-way is still a separation, so I guess I could just question the word adjacent lot.
That makes sense. I understand.
Anyway, I guess, go to the questions from staff to... Jim?
Can you tell me, does the applicant live at this other location? The applicant's address is Murdo.
To my understanding, they own the property, but it is not a full-time residence.
We'll go to questions from staff first, and then we come to you.
Occasionally, is that it, or I assume the applicant's here?
From what I understand, they own the house, and they occasionally, you know, go between the house and the home they own in Murdo.
Other questions for staff? I believe the applicant, I assume you're the applicant wishing to speak?
Yes.
Have you come to the podium, then state your name?
Your question, did we live there? Yes, we do. That's our...
You live there full-time?
Pretty much, yep. We're back and forth a few days to the ranch, but I'm retired.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant while you're at the podium?
I know there's been concern about property values. As far as I'm concerned, I own the best house on that Candlelight Drive. It's beautiful. I'm not going to build something there that's going to bring the values down, I can tell you that. I do pretty much everything first-class, no matter what it is. I've got a lot of older cars, very valuable cars. That's kind of why I want to build a garage there. The garage I got's not big enough.
Karen.
Could you tell me, please, are you planning to eventually build a single-family home on that property?
As high as that lot is, I'd have to say yes. Them lots are expensive.
And do you have a timeframe?
I don't know. That's the plan down the road. If it just prevents the probably put house, and that's why I'm putting that building where it is, because it leaves plenty of room to build a house in there.
And then you'll move your cars somewhere else?
Pardon?
And then you'll move your cars somewhere else?
Well, the garage will be there. If I sold it, yeah, I'd probably move somewhere else. But I don't guess I understand your question.
Well, I'm just curious about whether or not you're going to keep this garage for your own storage if you build another house there, or if that will be part of this, if you sell that house, since you can't live...
If I sold the lot that we're talking about, yes, I would probably move. I mean, that's the only way I would probably sell it if I die. I can't tell you what's going to happen down the road.
Okay, thanks.
No, I have no intention on selling it, but I don't know. You know, where are we going, and why? I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions for the applicant? I assume we probably have some comments from the audience with a number of letters we have. So, anyone from the audience wishing to speak at this time? Staff's recommendation...
Mr. Chairman.
Jim.
You know, I'm surprised there's nobody here, seeing as we have 15 letters or something. But I do find this a rather stunning anomaly in this neighborhood, because it doesn't seem to fit at all. This isn't like light ag or general ag or even low-density, where you have people putting up outbuildings. And, I mean, this has a certain uniformity, the neighborhood, from the looks of it. I haven't been out there, but from the looks of the photographs, that, and this particular effort on the part of Mr. Iverson seems inconsistent with it, to me. I, I don't know if that's a compelling and legitimate reason for denying this, but I know that if I lived in the area, I would be profoundly distressed if I saw this kind of development taking place. It just seems out of step with the neighborhood. And I find this rather difficult to think that this might go on indefinitely. I mean, he says, yeah, he might sell the lot, but he might not. I mean, it could be years and years. It's not like it's a temporary thing, just before somebody's going to build another house or something like that. So, my inclination is to deny this. I just, but maybe someone can enlighten me.
I guess I'll throw some of my comments. We don't have a motion yet on the table, but in some ways, I disagree with, I guess, some of the, agree with what Jim's saying. I don't know if that's a normal and orderly development, when we have a garage and don't know how long the house is going to be there. The other concern is, as stated in a lot of the letters we received, I think if you talked to a praiser, you would find that it has an impact on property values if you've got an empty building there, because they always look at what the value of the property is. And if you have a garage only there, I think the value of the property is comparable, is going to be a lot less than a normal house. Any other comments from Planning Commission?
Now, the structure is a garage, that's correct, but you can build a structure as good as you want or as poor as you want. You can make it blend right into the community. I don't see that, that's a big issue to me. I mean, I got to pay property taxes, too. I'm concerned. Like I said, you can build a building however you want to build one. You can build it to look like you're talking, but that's not the case there. It's going to be a nice structure.
I guess my concern would be that, and that was kind of my leading into the adjacent, I think I would view it differently if you basically had two parcels side by side. I think it gives a different feel and perception in the community, you know. Then it looks like one big lot, and actually could be a development lot, if you choose to plot it that way. But, I mean, that's, to me, being across the street kind of creates a different feel to the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I guess, I don't want to offend my neighbors either. I got to live there. I don't want to make them mad. I've talked to all of them. I told them that. I said, we'll try to put something that everybody's happy with. I mean, that's what my feelings were. Don't look at it as just an ugly garage, because that's not, you can make it look like a house if you want to. You can make it look like anything you want to. I guess that's where I'm going.
Well, at this point, we don't know. I mean, it could be, you know, just basically, there isn't a plan that's required at this stage on a Conditional Use Permit like this. I mean, we don't know if you're going to make it look like a house, or if it's going to basically, you know, quick throw together.
And I see where you're coming from. I, you know, I...
I'm sure that's some of the neighborhood concern.
I can see your concerns. I mean, I agree with you. Like I say, I've got $280,000 house across the street, or $225,000. I'm not going to devaluate that, and you can take my word for it. I mean, I can see your concerns.
Well, you know, I don't doubt that you'd do a nice job. I'm sure of that. But it's still a garage. And in the eyes of people looking at the neighborhood, some may be affected by that, some may not. Obviously, the prevailing feeling in your neighborhood is that indeed, it may affect the feeling and, you know, and the value of the neighborhood. So, it's, your intention is one thing, the reality of how people perceive it is another. No matter what you try to do to make a garage look beautified, may be difficult to pull off.
In my opinion, there's houses in there that I find offensive, but that's my opinion. We got a lot of boats, trailers. At least I want to put my stuff under cover. There's a lot of things in that housing development that's not all right. I mean, you got boats, trailers, you name it. They're sitting there, old pickups, junk stuff. So, I don't think I'm going to devaluate the property on it.
Well, I understand your concern. I mean, and you do have a vested interest in being across the street, too. And, I mean, I understand that, too. And also, I think we tend to side with the, you know, property rights, too, and orderly development of your property. But I guess that's, you know, my question is, is that typical orderly development to put a garage in a residential area like this? Other comments from Planning Commission, or questions? PJ, you?
Just one item. The applicant does have the option of building a garage with living quarters, and that would be done through a building permit. So, it could still be done.
Run that by again?
He could build a garage with living quarters. He could do that through a building permit, so that's still an option. Wanted to let you know.
Mr. Iverson.
I guess it's my understanding, if you don't like this plan, I got another plan. Let's look at what he said, to build a garage with living quarters. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have the final say on that, too, or can you?
No, that's just strictly a building permit at that point.
Yeah. That's all I need, is a building permit?
At that point, if it's got living quarters.
Okay, thank you.
Staff's recommendation is for approval of Conditional Use Permit 1508 with 10 conditions?
Sir, that's correct.
What?
That is correct.
Anyone want to offer a motion?
I move for denial of CUP 1508.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second for denial of Conditional Use Permit 1508. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Karen.
It's pretty clear to me that Mr. Iverson is going to do something on this lot. So, the question is, what's going to be worse for the neighborhood, to have a discreet garage or a garage with living quarters? I don't know. What do you...
No, it seems backwards. Living quarters with a garage is a big difference from a garage with living quarters. You know, what's appropriate in a residential neighborhood? I'd say the latter rather than the former.
And I'm sure PJ is correct. I don't think our ordinances differentiate. You've got living quarters.
Right.
I assume there are no covenants in this development or anything?
I guess my question, what would redefine a living quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kitchen and a sleeping area.
12 square feet or what? I don't know.
Well, they have to be at least 20 by 20, and this is 2,400 square feet, so 2,000 square feet over. Arrange hot water heater, water hooked up, and have to meet all those sewer requirements, get an approach permit for the property. So, basically, our regular building permit review process.
So, he'd have to put in a, are they connected to city water out there, or do they have septic?
I'm not sure.
There's a water system out there.
Water system, okay.
So, all that has to be connected as well.
Served by rainbow water right now. Soon be hooked up to the city, possibly.
This is a difficult one.
Any further discussion? From the audience, anyone? Applicant, Mr. Iverson? Motion and second is for denial. No further discussion. Motion second for denial, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried for denial. Takes us to item 14.
Item 14 is to amend a Conditional Use Permit, existing Conditional Use Permit, to allow for an addition of two storage unit buildings in Highway Service District. This is for Ralph and Sandra Cruz. The applicant has requested to build an additional two structures down here to the south. Conditional Use Permit 9619 was originally approved by the Planning Commission in May 21st, 1996. It was then amended for a caretaker's residence over here to the east. In 1998, the Conditional Use Permit was amended to allow three billboards. The Conditional Use Permit has also been, Conditional Use Permit for the property has been reviewed twice for the buildings. Again, the amendment is to allow an addition of two structures to the south of where these two currently are. Staff recommends approval with 10 conditions.
Questions for staff?
I have a question. What, I find the history of this kind of curious, just one Conditional Use Permit after another, for new and different uses, of course, which I understand. But what kind of zoning designation would allow for storage units?
Highway service and general commercial.
Those two, okay. I looked through, and I couldn't find those. I couldn't see that. But, okay, so, this really should be, its current zoning is highway service, but it needs a Conditional Use Permit to add these things?
That's correct. There needs to be a Conditional Use Permit to have...
But is there any kind of designation that allows for storage units without a Conditional Use Permit? I mean, it seems rather odd to me that there's not, that these are not provided by some regular zoning designation, you know. They're everywhere. So, all of them are evidently an exception to a rule, right? So, I was just curious, because I sometimes think, well, maybe we ought to rezone this thing to something more appropriate for storage units, et cetera. I'm not really opposed to, I mean, my initial reaction is not to be opposed to this application, but I'm just curious about that. And, so anyway, that was my question. Maybe we can...
The closest we get in heavy and light industrials, warehousing.
Oh, okay. So, if I came in and I... Oh, okay, so if I came in and I, it was light industrial, I said, I want to put up storage units, you'd, what would you do, would you say, well, okay?
No.
So then you say, you gotta get a conditional use permit, I, I think it might be a failing that we don't have, at least in one of these zoning designations, some accommodation for this type of development, but-
A good point.
So anyway, we are thus condemned to having to use a conditional use permit approach to-
Correct.
Okay.
Another one to add to your list?
Yeah.
Good point, Jim.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
I'd like to move that we approve the amendment to the conditional use permit CU 1509 with staff's recommended 10 conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second for approval per staff's recommendations with 10 conditions? Any discussion, any discussion from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item 15.
Hello again, item 15 is a major planned unit development amendment 1502 for Deerfield Park condominiums. This is to amend an existing planned unit development, currently, this is a PUD for Deerfield Park condominiums, these are residential condos that have had a planned unit development approved since 2002. On March 23rd, 2015, Planning Commission heard the review of planned unit development 0204. At this meeting, staff had recommended approval of the extension of PUD 0204 with 13 conditions. During discussion of that, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to amend condition number nine to change the language from specialty resort to vacation home rental, and to continue the review of PUD 0204 to today. Just to clarify, the amendment to condition number nine that was mentioned in the motion would be an amendment to the condition number nine that was recommended, not condition number nine that was approved in 2002. So on April 20th, the Planning Department submitted the major planned unit development amendment to amend that verbiage as directed by the Planning Commission, previously recommended condition number nine stated that the nightly weekly rental units remain licensed with the South Dakota Department of Health as a specialty resort. It is now recommended that condition number nine read that the nightly weekly rental units remain licensed with the South Dakota Department of Health as a vacation home rental. Also, planned unit development 0204 was originally approved with 14 conditions. At the March 23rd, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, staff did recommend 13 conditions of approval in order to remove a condition that has been met, however, since a formal planned unit development amendment has not been filed with the Planning Commission to remove that condition, staff is recommending that we keep the original 14 conditions for consistency and to make sure that we're doing everything in the appropriate order, so staff does recommend the approval of major planned unit development amendment 1502 with 14 conditions.
I agree, this is the right steps that, so we need to take to kind of clarify this, but I guess the one thing I kind of question in my mind, and, you know, a dozen years ago when the first PUD was formed, I doubt of the term vacation home rental even was being used. How do we protect ourselves in the future if there's some new designation and yet it's, you know, I don't know, I don't know what it'd be, but I mean, it just, you know, some spinoff of vacation home rental and it's called something else. It just, just food for thought, I guess, I don't expect any action or anything like that, but I mean, like I said, I think the special resort was probably the best language at the time, but that's just the way the words have changed, anyway. Other questions for staff or comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll do it again, I recommend approval of major planned unit development amendment 1502 with staff's recommended 14 conditions.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item 16.
Get it up, one second, please. Well, this is coming up, item 16 is layout plat 1508 to create lot 6A and 6B of Block Two of Rolling Hills Estate. The applicant's owner are Greg and Cynthia Andrews, and the agent is Fisk Land Surveying, and the agent, and I believe the owners are in the audience today. Current size of the lot is 3.7 acres and currently residential, this is the lot as it exists today. You'll notice on the front, on the north side of the lot, there's what appears to be a single-family residence, it was at one time, it has since been turned into storage, the range has been removed, the hot water heater has been removed, the water has been disconnected, it is being used as storage. Staff did conduct a site visit, did not go into the structure, but the exterior of the property appeared that no one was living there. There is a residence on the south side of the property, staff did actually communicate with, I believe would be the daughter that was in the house, just looking for the owners, but they were off-site at the time. So basically, what this is, is they're looking to split the lot into two areas, a north lot will be 1.8 acres, that's proposed lot 6A, the southern lot would be proposed lot 6B of 1.67 acres. The applicants did apply for lot size variance 1513 to have this approved. There was a conditional use permit on the property to allow the use of the northern residents as temporary residents while the house on the southern side of the property was being utilized, that CUP has since been ended. So if layout plat is approved, you would have a single-family residence with a detached shed on the property and a septic system. On the south side, there would be sheds on the property as well as a single-family residence. There is access off of this road right here, it ranges about 20 feet from staff's measurements with the tape. This is a dedicated easement to the United States that accesses through a gate through far, to far service. This recommendation and request was routed through the Interdepartmental Review and no issues of consequence were raised. Staff recommends approval of layout plat 1508 with 10 conditions. And this is layout plat, so there's more steps to this process.
PJ, I guess I had a question, I don't know if it really impacts the action or not, but it seems like, I was just kind of curious on staff's perception of the one building, you know, essentially it was abandoned, you know, and used for storage, I mean, so, to me, someone made the decision that it wasn't worth rehabbing. Is the rehab a total tear down of the house and restructure anew, and would that change any action?
I don't know what their plans are on the inside of the property, inside of the residence, they basically took out, like I said, the range, the hot water heater and disconnected the water, which essentially took the living quarters items out of it, and if they wanted, they'd have to put at least those three items back in, we don't have building codes to check anything.
But I mean, if they elected to basically bulldoze down the building and put a new building there, that really doesn't impact our actions here, does it?
With the, with the lot split or not split?
With, if it got split, now-
If it got split, then they would be looking to have a, if they didn't want to put a single-family residence on there, then it would be another accessory prior to a principal, because there already is-
No, if they were putting a brand-new residence on there.
It wouldn't be a problem.
It wouldn't really affect the action today, okay. Barbara, looks like you have a question?
Yeah, if, if they had asked to build a storage unit on that part of the lot, it's residential, so I'm, you know, the property owner has chosen to change what's allowed on the lot. The lot isn't zoned for storage unit, is it?
It's not a storage unit, just storage, it was allowed some time ago, and they, by doing the plat and splitting and subdividing the property, it would be more in compliance, especially if they were to convert that into a residence. If not, they would need a conditional use permit to maintain that as storage on the new property.
Right now, this is one lot, to me, it's an oversized storage building, that's been grandfathered in, so I mean, I'm not sure, until the lot's split and you call it storage then, I think you'd have to have addition, different terminology. Other, Jim?
Yeah, it isn't a commercial operation, I mean, they're just storing their own Christmas decorations or whatever there, I mean, it's not, I can't imagine this would remain in that condition, I would think, it's too nice a piece of property, it seems to me.
Other questions for PJ before I go to Janelle? Janelle, I assume you're representing the owners?
Yes, good morning, my name is Janelle Finkham with Fisk Land Surveying, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Andrew and his wife. Just to clarify, as Commissioner Coleman pointed out, this is not a commercial storage. Essentially, what they did, the, the house that's on the northern portion was moved there in the 70s after the flood, and it had, at one point in time, received a little bit of additional water damage, and the owner decided that he wanted to build a newer, more contemporary residence on the south portion of the lot, which he applied for a conditional use permit to allow the existing residents to be temporary while he constructed the new residence. And when he completed that, as part of the terms of the conditional use permit, it's either remove the home or you can render it non-habitable. So they rendered it non-habitable by removing hot water heater appliances and all those things, so it's just been personal storage. Over the roughly 10 years since he constructed his new residence, I think we've all kind of seen more of a rise or interest in rehabilitating homes, you know, repurposing, reusing. In terms of the lot sizes for this area, even if he splits, it's relatively consistent with the zoning size in this area with the lot sizes. I think you, there's a diagram in your packet, the one that has nice little X's again, that shows that about 90% of the lots that are in the Rolling Hills area and are zoned LDR are less than the three acres in size, so it's, it's pretty consistent with the way that the lots are being used out there. So at this point, he would really like the opportunity to split the lot, similar to some of the sizes from his neighbors, and be able to rehabilitate the northerly residents, and he doesn't have any plans to tear it down, I think they would like to just, you know, do some work on it so that it becomes more habitable, and, you know, would be an asset again into the area. It's been there since the 70s, so it's not like it would be a, you know, it has definitely been a part of the neighborhood and a feature there. So, and even if they left it, they don't need a conditional use permit to have that, the conditional use permit that was granted was dissolved when it was rendered into storage, so they don't need any action today, what they're doing is perfectly legal the way they're using it now.
Other questions for Janelle? Any comments from the audience? Staff's recommendations for approval of layout plat 1508 with 10 conditions that entertain a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make an observation. I think the little map with all the X's on it is, I want to say to myself, thank God we have zoning, because, I mean, we have all these exceptions. Now, I tend to believe that oftentimes, exceptions are rather sensible expressions of good government, but it does sort of amaze me how all of these are zoned, and they all have probably minor but meaningful except variations, so, anyway, just an observation.
That's a great observation, it's actually something Janelle and I spoke about, she had mentioned that in time, it would be desirable if the county had a designation between low-density residential, which is three acres, and suburban residential, it could be one acre down to a half acre, so-
That's, that's a very good point, yes, I would agree.
That's Janelle's idea.
Chair.
There are multiple, multiple areas like this that we have where the lot sizes are inconsistent.
That would be another argument for revisiting our comprehensive plan.
Right.
Absolutely.
Put that on your list, Dave.
We have a motion and second, further discussion beyond that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Item 17.
Item 17 is rezone 1502 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1502 to rezone 151.36 acres from General Agriculture District and Light Industrial District to General Commercial District, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from limited agriculture district to general commercial district. The applicant and owner is Mitch Morris, skip some pages here. Staff recommends to continue rezone 1502 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1502 to the May 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence.
Questions for PJ?
And why are we continuing it? What are we waiting on?
Applicant has some things to do on the property prior and felt it would be best to continue instead of having being heard and possibly continue.
So it's the applicant's wish that we-
Both, recommendation from staff to the applicant, applicant agreed.
Okay. But we, we were waiting like on the Highway Department, weren't we?
Which we did get.
And we got that information, but, okay.
Come up on the next one.
Basically saying they aren't going to comment, just-
They're not, basically saying they're not going to comment until it's platted.
Yeah, right.
Other questions for PJ? Staff's recommendation is to continue rezone 1502 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1502 to the May 26 meeting, and entertain a motion to that effect?
I moved. Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item 18.
Item 18 is rezone 1503 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1503 to rezone 424.42 acres from General Commercial District to Suburban Residential District, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant and the owner is Mitch Morris, the current size of the property is stated as 424.42 acres. Essentially, the applicant is taking some, let me see if I have it up here, is basically taking this area of the property that he owns and splitting it into approximately 14 different areas, at least as far as the projected plan has indicated. There is a conditional use permit for an airstrip, which appears right in this section of the property here, and if this was rezoned to suburban residential, that airstrip would have to be brought up again, and the conditional use permit reviewed to be able to change the designation of the zoning district. At this time, according to the applicant, he would probably just end the conditional use permit if the rezone and Comprehensive Plan Amendment for this area were approved. The applicant is proposing to add approximately 2,550-plus lots, not all of those would be in the area that he's proposing to rezone, the area in question is this area right here, the area that was just continued is the commercial area on this side. So in the whole area, the Morris, proposed Morris subdivision, I believe, is the, are all the lots that were indicated that are over 2,500 lots. It is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City, and therefore, the applicant would have to talk with the city and meet all of their requirements prior to plating. The applicant has been in contact with the city, and at this time, I haven't received anything from the city, and I'm not sure exactly of all the conversations that they have had. This was routed through the Interdepartmental Review, County Highway, came back with some concerns as far as access off of Old Folsom Road, off of Highway 79, and basically had mentioned that prior to the final plat approval, a traffic study showing the effects of development on Folsom Road should be performed, and the Veripol should be responsible to make required improvements for the development of Highway 79 prior to the Highway Department granting development access on Old Folsom Road. Again, the applicant is requesting the Comprehensive Plan Amendment change from Agriculture District to Suburban Residential District. Request for comment was routed through the Interdepartmental Review for the Comprehensive Plan, no items of significant came back that were any different than what was received for the rezone request. This item was continued to this meeting to allow the applicant time to resend a letter to Megahorn LLC, he originally sent a letter and went to the wrong address, he has since shown evidence that the letter was mailed, and I have been in contact through an email from the owner or a representative from Megahorn LLC, so they have received the letter. Also, this was continued to allow the South Dakota Department of Transportation to comment on this item. We have heard back from the South Dakota Department of Transportation essentially saying what Commissioner, excuse me, the chairman, has mentioned, that they will, they have no comments at this time, but will comment once the property is rezoned, or platted, excuse me. Again, the applicant indicated that if rezone 1503 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1503 are approved, that he would end conditional use permit 1115. As requested, the applicant has sent the new notice to Megahorn LLC, and staff received, again, no- again, notification of that. We did hear back from South Dakota Department of Transportation. Staff does have concerns as far as water and sewage on the property, the availability. The applicant's request does not appear to be in harmony with the future land use of Pennington County. The appropriate use of the area appears to be agriculture and light industrial, and the lack of information pertaining to available utilities, water, and sewer are of concern to staff. At this time, staff recommends denial of rezone fifteen oh three and Comprehensive Plan Amendment fifteen oh three.
For the question for PJ?
I have a question. Can you tell me, I've never been out to this location, but how close is this to that development called Black Gap or Black whatever it is down there? Is it in that area?
The low-density area, this?
Yeah. Is this in that area?
I think I indicated how close that was. Let me find that for you.
I know that's on Highway seventy-nine, just south of town, and I, yeah, there it is. Black Gap, is that what it is? Yeah, so it's a bit south of there.
If we were to use this, it could be about a mile or so, yeah. If we were to use this gap.
We got Black Gap out there in the middle of nowhere.
PUD.
Yeah, okay, a PUD, okay. And I know they've got, there're septic systems, I know, or mound systems, many of them and stuff. I know they had some sewage problems and stuff. So perhaps, I mean, the presence of a residential development isn't all that unusual, even though it may be zoned agricultural industrial, but it does seem the utility situation could be a difficult. I, and I don't know what has happened at Black Gap, if they have had unfortunate incidents in regard to that, but I know they had some trouble initially, I know.
I'm going to check with Brittany to see if anything's come up for Black Gap.
Sure. Good morning, Brittany Molitor. Black Gap, they do have a community water system, I do know, and most, a majority of the systems are mound systems in that subdivision due to the presence of shale and heavy clay-type soils.
And I assume this would be similar, this Morris proposal?
I'd have to look at the soils maps, because the soils in the area are so different.
Oh, okay.
But that would be, you know, done through profile holes and things like that, but a large subdivision like that, I don't know. I think those lots are smaller than an acre, or twenty thousand square feet, so they would need some community type of system if they're smaller than twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah. Well, the one neighbor, what was the name of that outfit?
I go for it.
Yeah. Is that Mr. Gould?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Well, he responded very negatively about this, obviously. I don't know if he knows what he's talking about, but I'm, I'm sure he's concerned, so. Anyway, that was my question, I guess.
PJ, a question I had, well, it showed up on your aerial, but isn't part of the reason the county is looking at ag, limited ag in this area is the issue several years ago from the Thai, well, that aerial that you just went by? The Thai plant, or the Thai station?
D.C. Thai?
Yeah.
That was an area of concern and considerable discussion last time.
And I know there's been things done, but I mean, now we're talking about putting two thousand homes, small, you know, a big community in South Dakota, new one that close to that Thai station, I just, Intertai?
And I believe one of the comments was that there'd be a buffer between residential and the D.C. Thai, which is why the applicant came further south to do this subdivision phase instead of up in this area. However, according to the proposal, he is looking to do something eventually up in that, what would be the buffer zone.
Okay. Well, even if I recall the, all the newspaper articles, I mean, there were complaints from further away than the distance we're talking about, this subdivision to that Intertai.
And they are expanding that Thai as we speak.
I know the city has commented that they're not planning to extend sewer and water out to that area. Does Mr., have you talked with Mr. Morris about his own capability to manage the utility systems for this large?
Not in any depth at all, other than he said he would work on it, which is one of the concerns of why it was denied, why we recommend denial, is that information just not there to present to you?
I'm just wondering if he's planning to sell portions of his property to finance, you know, to do that kind of a developmental scheme, which makes me very nervous.
I know he has plans to sell the part of the commercial area. We've already gotten some requests from possible buyers about what they can do on it if it was rezoned to general commercial. We haven't heard anything on this lot.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Morris? Isn't present today?
I'll see him.
Anyone here representing Mr. Morris today?
Maybe a possibility to change the recommendation and be denied without prejudice. Do you want an opportunity to come back with more information?
Yeah, I, I think I would still move that this be denied without prejudice, so we can maybe get some more information from him.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second for deny without prejudice. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Take us to item nineteen.
One second.
Telecommunication facility.
Item nineteen, telecommunication facility permit fifteen oh one to allow one hundred and ninety-foot stealth monopine pole and equipment shelter in a general commercial district. The applicant and agent is Verizon Wireless Brian Cabot from Buell Consulting. He is in the audience today. The owner is Joseph Thburg. The size of the property is twenty-one point nine four acres, and the property is currently vacant. There have been previous attempts to put a communication monopole tower, stealth communication tower, on an adjacent, adjacent property, which is actually off of the screen at this location. It was done in two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen, and both were denied. The addition of the one hundred and ninety-foot stealth monopine on the subject property would fill a gap in the communication signals for the area for Pennington County. And the one hundred and ninety-nine foot monopine, it's one hundred and ninety feet with a proposed nine-foot lightning rod, so it comes to the one hundred and ninety-nine. At that height, it does not meet the Federal Aviation Administration requirement for lighting, so it, it is not as much of a concern if it was over two hundred feet. The property as exists today, again, is a general commercial district, is twenty-one point nine four acres. It was platted via book eleven, page twenty-eight. Access to the subject property is off of a nineteen-to-twenty-foot wide gravel driveway. Access to the monopine would use an existing approach that, the conditional use permits, such as bituminous paving and basically bat plants have used in this area. It was a twenty-foot wide access and utilities right-of-way, and it would go all the way back to where the proposed location of the, of the monopine would be. There are two other stealth monopine telecommunication towers in Pennington County, and I'll get those up on the screen here real quick for you. The first was done via building permit administrative approval in two thousand and nine, which is on Big Bend Road. It is in a suburban residential district, and at the time of the staff report, no complaints have been received by the planning department about this stealth monopine. In two thousand and ten, through a telecommunication facility permit, a hundred-and-five-foot stealth pine tree was put out on Sheridan Lake Road. It is also zoned suburban residential, and as of the time of the staff report, no complaints have been received by the planning department. The proposed location of the monopine is consistent with the other monopines approved for placement in Pennington County, and which are also located in lower priority areas, which we can get to in a minute. Section three sixteen, telecommunication facilities. A hundred and ninety-foot monopine pole, the overall height of one hundred and ninety-nine feet would be on the property, also an equipment shelter, approximately about three hundred and fifty square feet, a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with three strands of barbed wire, and the entire area excluding the driveway would take up just about fifty-six hundred square feet. Section three nineteen G, the required setbacks for the telecommunication tower is one point one, the overall height, which brings one hundred and ninety-nine feet up to two hundred and eighteen. According to the applicant in the packet that was submitted, it shows distances from all areas to the, from the pole to the lot lines of greater than three hundred and eighty feet, and therefore is not of consideration, and believes the applicant meets that requirement. Possible structure failure of the property, there is a letter in your packets from Sabre Industries from Amy Herbst, the engineer, and she, where she explained that the structural standards for the antenna-supporting structures and antennas would be met, and is very unlikely that the tower would just fall over. It is designed to buckle under high winds, and I believe that is explained in her packet. At the time of the staff report, no citizens' complaints were received. However, on yesterday, May tenth, an email was sent from the Radigans, which spoke of and protest of the telecommunication facility. As far as aesthetics for the monopine, the, shall, it shall be designed, according to our ordinance, it shall be designed to minimize the visual impact of the surrounding environment and shall be compatible with the aesthetic character of the surrounding area, and it appears that stealth monopine is meeting this criteria. The antenna and supporting structure shall be designed to blend in the surrounding environment by use of environmental camouflage, stealth design technology, or other means where possible, and it appears the proposed stealth monopine is meeting this criteria. If you recall, when this was originally brought up on the, for the ag property, one of the recommendations from the Planning Commission was for the applicant to come back with a stealth proposal, which the applicant did. However, it met, it did not meet a considerable amount of our zoning ordinances, and there's things that just couldn't have, could not have been changed. The applicant was trying to meet the recommendation of the Planning Commission of Pennington County, however, was unable to, and that, that second request was ultimately denied. In review of an application for a telecommunication facility, the following factors at a minimum may be considered by the administrator and or planning commission in relation to the aesthetics. The type of terrain in the surrounding area, presence of trees or other existing natural features which help shield or block view angles, use of colors and materials which are compatible with the surrounding area, FAA requirements for coloring and lighting, and new stealth design. It appears via the applicant's packet submitted for the permit by the, that all five of the above-mentioned items are being met. The proposed design of the telecommunication monopine pole appears to satisfy all applicable general design requirements per section three sixteen with the following notable exception. Section three sixteen H one A, applicants for a telecommunication facility shall be located or directed, and sorry, I'm not looking up so much, I just don't want to, I want to make sure I get it right. The applicants for a telecommunication facility located, sighted, and erected of said telecommunication facility in accordance with the following priorities, one being the highest and five being the lowest. This was of concern with the previous requests from the other applicants. Number one is that an exit, that a tower be done on existing, additions be done on existing towers or other structures without increasing the height of the tower or structures, which we do a lot of times in our office, through minor and major changes to towers. Number two, on properties zoned, or if not zoned, characterized predominantly by industrial use. Number three, on properties zoned general commercial, which the subject property is, on properties containing forty acres or more, or zoned agriculture. Or number five, on properties zoned, or if not zoned, characterized by predominantly residential. This, this request appears on a property zoned general commercial, which is smack dab in the middle of the priorities. If the proposed site is not proposed for the highest priority listed above per section three sixteen H one A, then a detailed explanation must be provided as to why the site of a higher priority was not selected. The applicant has indicated in the eight-page packet submitted with the application that no higher priorities for the telecommunication equipment exist in the area. Per section three sixteen H one F, number four, again, we're on page six now of nine of the staff report, if I would like to follow along. Notwithstanding that a potential site may be situated in an area of highest priority or highest available priority, the administrator and or planning commission may disapprove an application for any of the following reasons. The use or construction of a telecommunication facility which is contrary to an already-stated purpose of a specific zoning or land use designation, conflict with the character of the surrounding land use, the owner of the property did not agree to allow future co-location of the, of other antennas, or conflicts with provisions of this ordinance. This telecommunication facility permit is not in conflict with reasons one, two, or three as stated above. However, it appears to be in conflict with item four, with, against other ord, other zoning ordinances. Section three sixteen H one B, the proposed site is to be for the highest possible priority listed above, and again, the applicant has indicated why it's not for item two or item one of the priorities listed. Zoning ordinance also states, when feasible, a facility bit shall be sighted so that at least eighty percent of the height of the tower and accompanying structures is screened from view by vegetation. However, on the subject property, it does not appear feasible for the applicant to attain eighty percent concealment as required by the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The request was routed through the Interdepartmental Review, and no items of significance were raised. Finally, on section three sixteen H D, notwithstanding the above, the administrator or planning commission may approve any site located within an area in the approved list of priorities provided the administrator and or planning commission finds that the proposed site is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the county and its residents, and will not have a deleterious effect on the nature and character of the existing uses on the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff recommends approval of telecommunication facility fifteen oh one with ten conditions. It's all out there.
Questions for PJ? Yes, one question I have is, as proposed, my understanding is it meets all setback requirements, but this is general commercial. How would staff handle the situation if they wanted to bring something that's approved on general commercial within the two hundred and eighteen feet?
Yeah, there's, we haven't, there are, if I show you here, there are stealth communication towers that exist, and if you were to look at, like, this one right here, I'm not sure which came first, the residence or the telecommunication facility, probably assume probably the tower. It's a hundred and five feet, it's unclear what the distance is from this location. General commercial in and of itself does have its own specific set of setback requirements, especially he does a but a residential district, there's a planned unit development to the southwest, so, which would, as far as lot lines go. We have, this staff has not had to tackle the problem of if they're looking to put another residence within that fall zone, the one point one times the heights distance, there will be, I've said, they will build a storage structure right directly underneath the tower, which is pretty common.
Well, with general commercial, there's, it's quite a bit more open what can come in there. I mean, probably somebody wouldn't put a residence there, I guess, I was thinking just, location-wise, I don't see a convenience store, but just for example, you know, a convenience store could go in within the two hundred and eighteen feet, and would,
possibly could request that.
Staff's recommendation to deny that convenience, Mart, or?
We'd have to look at where they want to put it, and what they want to do, and what their access is going to be. We try to probably, for safety reasons, we would probably try to keep it outside the fall zone.
Well, there's plenty of law to do that, yeah.
Twenty-one acres is considerable room. Usable room, still.
Other questions for staff?
I just have one, one quick question. Are the other two stealth monopines in the Hills Verizon facilities as well?
I'm not sure. It changes, it changes a lot.
Other questions for PJ? The applicant here wishing to speak?
I have one other question. PJ?
Yes.
I assume the judgment about where this is to be placed is partly a technical one also, in terms of the amount of, you know, area that it'll cover and so forth. I guess my question is, do we simply rely on Verizon and other providers to provide that information, or is there some way we can confirm whether or not this is the only location in the area that technically will work?
Not having engineers in the office, we rely on the applicant to provide that information, and actually, that's what's up on the screen now. I believe this is coverage prior to the tower, and the next slide would be, the dark blue is coverage with the tower.
But the judgment about where it can be, or where it can't be, or where it's feasible and where it's not technically, is, is this the judgment made that we accept from Verizon, or do we somehow say, no, there's several areas over here you guys could go, you know? I guess that's my question.
Yeah. From my experience with telecommunication facilities, they bring, they bring in the primary number-one choice first.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
All right, yeah, I think so.
Is this coverage map, is that strictly Verizon coverage, or is that competitors as well?
Certainly. My name's Brian Cabot, I'm with Buell Consulting, out of St. Paul, Minnesota, and I'm a representative, agent for Verizon Wireless. The, what the coverage, the propagation map that you're seeing here is strictly Verizon's coverage. There are two sites noted on the propagation maps, one to the west called Rimrock, and one to the east called Foghorn Cleghorn. Both of those sites are, are shared by Verizon and AT&amp;T. I, I can't speak for AT&amp;T, of course, but I, I would, I would wager that, that their coverage is probably very similar to what you see here.
The reason I ask is we get, some of our letters say, we don't The reason I ask is we get some of our letters that we don't have any outages in that in that area and but it the maps show that there is and that's why.
Is there any plans for sharing the tower at this time immediately?
Not immediately. I would imagine that that AT&amp;T and or other carriers would would co-locate. We've been as as PJ pointed out, we've been trying to build a site here for a long time and we keep coming back because Verizon really needs this coverage. It's a high priority for them. It'll provide wireless coverage both to the residences residences in the area as well as provide a more seamless coverage along along Highway 44. I would say that there are probably some safety implications there. There are there are drop calls on 44. I drop calls up there all the time and and if you're on the phone and traveling through the area and your call drops, your attention goes from the road to your phone, for better or worse. Unfortunately, that's the case. So that's that is one interesting element of of this and.
Other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Cabot. Can you tell me why this one is has to be so much taller than the other monopines?
The higher the antennas are, the wider area coverage we get generally as a as a rule. There's a lot of topography in this area that affects affects the ability for a signal to propagate effectively. But if that if that if this particular structure were reduced in height to say a hundred and five feet, chances are likely we'd have to build at least another two sites to make up for that deficit. So we'd we'd be in here putting up towers elsewhere in the vicinity to to try to make up for that coverage deficit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Zapkin? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to have a couple of people listen to their testimony first?
I'm Heidi Crawford and my husband Sean would be here as well, but he's working to pay for our property and I'm here to defend the value of that property. We are right next to where that cell phone tower is being proposed to be put up and I think PJ is going to pull that up for for us hopefully. I am very concerned about this because we chose to live in that location. We chose to put our money into that land and to live where there's a beautiful view and very high-end property up there and and not such a nice house. And last time we were up here, the the guy from the consulting place said, well, we are proposing to put that that pole next to your house because it's not a very nice house, was pretty much exactly what he said. And that I mean, that's offensive just personally, but it's also very wrong because we if we had put the same money into a house in town, we would have a huge, beautiful home. But we chose to live in a beautiful location and upgrade our house as we could. We just met with all construction and we have a we're undergoing designs to add a thousand square feet to our house now that we can afford it and and completely redo the outside of the house, the new windows, new siding. And if if we do that, our house will probably be worth at least $400,000. To us, that's the biggest investment that we have. We can't afford to lose any property value right there. I don't even think we can get it mortgaged for what we would need to to cover the construction loan with the devaluation of our property. It's a huge concern. I think we would probably move if if this goes through and then we're going to be stuck with a property that is now worth less than than if this ginormous eyesore of a of a cell phone tower gets put right there. It's being compared to the one on Sheridan Lake Road. I don't think that's a fair comparison at all for a couple of reasons. First of all, this is a scenic highway and and I think in the Black Hills, we need to send the telecommunication the telecommunication carriers a strong message that our scenic highways are important to us as a community. And you can't go stick a 200-foot fake tree right off of a scenic highway and not even come close to meeting the eighty percent coverage amen or the covenants that are laid out there. You know, the those are there for a purpose to protect our community and protect the surrounding homeowners. And it's what maybe 10% covered right there? If if you're driving, so if you're headed west up highway up West Highway 44, you'd be coming up the hill, you'd be coming right past Cinnamon Ridge and as you would you wouldn't even get up the hill before you you would see this tower sticking out above the rest of the tree line. And especially coming up from the west, there is hardly any tree coverage right there. In on Sheridan Lake Road, the tree the the tree coverage is is much, much better. And that tower is half the size of this tower. It it would it's going to look absolutely ridiculous. And if you look back through the see if we can even get through this. I don't know which button moves it where, but.
Which slide did you want?
The the one that shows the tower. I mean, it you can see how ridiculous it's going to look. It's not going to blend in. In fact, it's going to stick out like a green, huge sore thumb with fake.
That one or?
Yeah, that one. And that's actually coming from that picture was taken if you were headed back into town. That's the better coverage than if you're headed out of town. My house, you can see my garage right from that picture. There would be no way to miss that from our property. It would tower above, you know, it's practically in my backyard. The other thing is, you know, it's interesting that they showed you the map Verizon Verizon showed you the map that, oh, look, we don't have hardly any coverage. That's because right now they're using two towers on both ends of the highway. One is at the the right across from Canyon Lake, down at the bottom of West Highway 44. They're using that tower and then the other one at the end of West Highway 44, almost by 385. But those are other providers' towers and Verizon wants their own tower. They don't want to pay to to use other providers. We have cell our cell service there is great. We can see the one we can see the Sheridan Lake Tower from our house. So and I carpool and I drive up West Highway 44 almost every day. And yes, your calls drop in a couple places up there, but you can call you can hit redial and and you have your call right back. And it is in the hills and, you know, are you going to have 100% coverage all the way through the Black Hills? I don't how many towers you're going to have to put up in order to to have zero dropped calls anywhere in the Black Hills? Our coverage is actually pretty good up there and, you know, the place where there isn't coverage is out on 385 and this this tower won't help 385 at all. There's already a tower out there. So I I ask that you absolutely deny this for for a few different reasons. First of all, it's not needed. Second of all, what an eyesore. I mean, that's ridiculous. That's not in in line with the covenants that were laid out to protect the Black Hills and homeowners. And third, I personally cannot afford to have our biggest investment, our property values devastated like this. It's it's not fair. Our neighbor told my husband that he will make, I think it was at least $1,200 a month rent off of this off of this tower. Well, and that's great. I'm all for people making money. I love for my neighbors to do well, but that's not free. That is going to come off of my property values. It's my property values that are going to write that check every month and I'm not okay with my neighbors doing that when when it is going to be at the expense of my family and the Swansons and the Radigans and the the surrounding areas. So please take that into consideration. I think this is ridiculous. And there's I was noticing as I drove here today in in from my house that that ridge all the way up West Highway 44 until you get to Cinnamon Ridge, there's there's a ridge across from there. There's radio towers up there. Nobody's going to build up there. It's it's not a buildable place or it's not where people build is on top of that ridge, but it'd be a great location for towers. The reason they have this one that they're continually bringing back is because our neighbor has zero conditions on it. He doesn't care. He does not care about anything. He has washers and dryers sitting right on our road. He's got piles of dirt everywhere. He's got old tractors, old vehicles, old equipment sitting there, just garbage put literally garbage piled everywhere. This is an easy location. He he does not care about making his neighbors mad. He just got a Joe Radigan can tell you what just happened.
Right, to summarize your comments, we had other people wishing to speak.
Okay, well, I could go on and on. I'm I'm like so against this, but okay, so we'll wrap it up, but they keep proposing this location because it's easy and because our neighbor doesn't care.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Crawford?
I was wrapping it up.
Questions? I guess from your comments, are you saying you'd prefer a monopole?
I don't think that that's the right place for for a pole at all, right? I I think a 100-foot one would be a lot better than a 200-foot one. I think it would blend in a lot better there and it wouldn't be so obvious when you drive up the road.
I'm just asking, fake tree or a monopole is the question.
I don't think it really matters.
Okay. Thank you.
Heidi, can you tell me which which of those lots is yours? Is it the one directly to the south?
Yes, that one's ours. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would you be more in favor if the landowner were to put in a large motel and restaurant, et cetera, et cetera? That kind of commercial activity? Because this is zoned commercial and it's open to a lot of things. I understand your objection. I sympathize completely. I live out on Nemo Road where there's lots of trees and I would hate to see a big pole sticking up across from my place, but I also don't have any cell service out on Nemo Road, which at times is very inconvenient. In any event, I I just I just want to alert you to the possibility that there could be something even more egregious than this pole. I mean.
We have thought about that and, you know, who know and this guy will propose absolutely anything to make money. He does not care. And thank goodness, that's why we do have.
I caution yourself of making comments that you can't substantiate. I mean, it maybe it appears evident, but I mean, those are pretty inflammatory comments about that without proof. Just be careful.
But I brought some pictures of his land if you would like to see it.
No, but you're you're saying he doesn't care. He, you know, I don't know that you can say that for a fact.
Okay, well, the fact is that he does things to that land all the time and like the last since we've lived there, in fact, every summer, he rents that land out to to people who come in and like this last summer, he had dirt dumped there and and all the the construction that was done, all of the trucks for.
Well, and I'm not trying to argue with you. I guess trying to get you to answer, you know, Jim asked you a question. I guess what I'm getting at is just caution you in making, you know, statements that can't be substantiated, that are personal opinions and, you know, the actions.
Sheriff, the sheriff was just out there because he just threatened to blow somebody's windows out for going over seven miles an hour.
But you're sidetracking from Mr. Jim's question. His question was.
About the hotel.
Right.
Well, and I was no, I was answering that because I was saying he will propose absolutely anything.
And there is a lot that is approved under general commercial. I think that's what Jim is getting at, that without going through a conditional use, he could come in there right now and put up a motel and there's nothing that you could do to stop it.
Right. You it would be your guys' job to make sure that 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 motel was.
All he has to do is pull a building permit under general commercial. It doesn't come it doesn't come in front of us.
Yeah. That I just want to alert you to that is all I'm saying. You know what used to be there? A sawmill.
Right.
Things could be a lot worse is what I'm saying. And I I understand, as I say, your objection and your concern and I I really do, but.
And I'm not disputing anything you're saying. I'm just saying that I think in a public forum, you need to be careful of inflammatory remarks that you can't back up.
Well, we have lots of we have lots of things we could back up to to to.
And I pointing out the dirt piles, the junk, that's fact.
He dumps things on our property lines. He knocked over their fence, putting up a well, yeah, and I won't get into it, but he now has a restraining order against him and we we're like the most peaceable neighbors. We don't yell at him to clean up his junk. We don't yell at him to do anything. We don't drag him in here, making him do anything.
We're kind of getting way off topic here, so.
Okay, well, I'm just saying there's there's a reason I said that. So are there any other questions?
I believe we had other people in the audience wishing to speak. Thank you.
Joe Radigan, I'm the property owner along with my wife of this this parcel right below Mrs. Crawford's land. And I provided an email that I think you have copies of that summarizes my basic concerns. First of all, I'm not opposed to cell towers at all. And in fact, the one down by Johnson Siding, I think, is is a very fine structure. You know, for for some time, I didn't even realize it was a cell tower. So I think the city or the the county's guidelines for that of the 80% coverage are are great, you know, you can barely see it. I don't know if you've driven by there before or not. Now, this one is is a bit different. 200 feet, you know, it is going to be a monstrosity. One of the other intriguing things about this particular area is, you know, this is on the Madison Aquifer. And the reason you see these big lots is because the county essentially only allows one septic system for 10 acres. So this will not be a high-density area, you know, for protection of Madison Aquifer. I have AT&amp;T service, my wife has Verizon. I've never had a call drop. Of course, I I kind of take a practice that I don't talk on the phone when I'm driving, but walking around in this field, there's nowhere where I can't get service. In terms of internet, we in the last year have been we now have high-speed DSL on our phones, so there's not a need for that. You know, I I just would like to have if there's going to be a tower, a much smaller tower. Now, the other thing that Mr. Coleman brought up, which I think is very interesting in terms of selection of locations, this is all Forest Service over in this area. You know, there's a lot of Forest Service out there. I know in the staff report, there's a note about cell towers not being on Forest Service, but I just did a little internet search and to me, you know, they have provisions for cell towers on Forest Service. And in fact, I pulled off the 2015 rental agreements that, you know, what how much you have to pay for a cell tower on Forest Service. So I'm not sure that's been run to ground. And, you know, the elevation of this, the proposed site, is just a little over 4,000 feet. It's 4,500 feet over here. You could gain tremendous and nobody would have to see it because it would be away from residences. So I don't know that Verizon commissioned a study to really truly investigate the possibilities or whether they actually just went to one landowner. Anyway, those are my primary concerns.
Mr. Radigan, you mentioned the tower at Johnson Siding and you're right, that tower is very, very secreted. I mean, you drive down the road and I'm like you, it took me a long time to even be aware of it. And the reason is it does set up on that ridge with trees that are close to the same size where this seems to be, you know, some kind of arid growth right out in the middle of a field. It's not it's not really out in the middle of a field, but it it sticks out in in a much more dramatic way. And so I appreciate that and it does seem like it would be best if if Verizon and other providers could find locations that are indeed, you know, that that doesn't make it so conspicuous. And yet I also know there's a cost factor involved here. You know, that may be a big element and, you know, let's face it, people complain about their cell phone service. If all of a sudden we said, yeah, well, we're going to have to double the price here, they they would be, you know. So there's also an essential, you know, cost factor, I'm sure that has to be factored in somehow, but. factored in somehow, but, uh, I'm like you. I, I, it does seem to me there ought to be a way to stick this up in amongst some trees, and of course, if you get it into the forest, then it's not effective, I suppose. So it has to stick up, sort of like a sore thumb, in order to be effective, I would think.
And along that line, if, if the, if the commissioners were, uh, in favor of, of approving this or not in favor of denying it, I would ask that we would, could do some sort of a continuance. Uh, I'm a consulting engineer, and I, I would run that to ground on the Forest Service because it seems so logical to me. Now, I just Googled it this morning and spent about an hour looking through there, and I could not find a reason why one cannot pursue the Forest Service.
PJ, I guess, uh, I remember reading, I was trying to find it in the staff report. I thought I remember reading that too, and I thought it was a Forest Service comment.
It was a comment that came back from the Forest Service. It's actually item number five on page eight of nine. Special use permits for a cell tower located on natural Forest Service land will not be authorized. Cell towers, uh, cell tower needs to be entirely on private property. That's directly from the Forest Service.
And my concern is, when I popped it up, I got a webpage with guidelines for cell towers on Forest Service. I got a guideline for what the payment schedules are for cell towers on Forest Service, two thousand and fifteen calendar year. Like I say, maybe I'm missing something, but I would run it to ground, uh, if you gave me a week or so.
It, it does seem odd that he would find that stuff in our, maybe it's just our Forest Service district or something that...
It's possible I can ask for Rodney's more specific comments, possibly even be here.
It does, you know, I'm glad, uh, Ms. Rattigan has brought that up because it's quite revealing.
Could we get...
Yeah, I, I think that's interesting too, because I mean, I read the, the staff report and saw that, and, uh, and I think there's two questions there. First of all, would the Forest Service allow it? And secondly, technically, does it even work from that location? You know, it could be that the coverage pattern, you know, I know that's, those are designed. They aren't just arbitrarily placed, yeah. We'll get back to you in a second, so...
I, I know that, that the previous, um, application for the property directly to the east here, there was a lot of conversation about locations down in this area. My assumption is that they're not feasible because they came back with this new request, the different, on this different property.
Well, and I remember last...
I don't, I don't know what they researched or had discussions with. I know the old, the other applicant was out on those properties. He had stated that, but has since moved on to a different position, so...
Well, and I thought, if I recall from our last discussion on this, I mean, I thought one of the comments from some of the residents was push it in the trees that we're, we're currently at.
That was. And this is a more desirable lot for a monopole. Or, excuse me, for this request.
Other questions for Mr. Rattigan? I believe we had some other people in the audience wishing to speak, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome back to the applicants representative after we give very well, uh, else's chance first, so...
I'm Dr. Eric Swanson. I have, uh, property on three sides right here. Twenty-five acres, this ten-acre lot, which my personal home is, this ten-acre lot, this ten-acre lot, this thirty-five acres, this two acres. So I have a total of about a hundred acres surrounded. Two sides of this property. I've been in, in, uh, contact with my neighbors. The Pattons, which are over here, I've been in contact with the, uh, Bradskys in this area. Both these guys cannot be here today. They're opposed to this whole process too. Their process, uh, the neighbors that are over here, the other Bradsky, the father over here, he's opposed to it. Also a member of the fire department, which is right here. I've been on that fire department for ten years. We have concerns from the fire department. Originally, the whole story about this tower is it was originally going to be placed at this fire department. And when the fire department proposed it, uh, that's when the moratorium on the cellphone towers about six, eight years ago was placed, was because of the aesthetic problems and the difficulties in placing a cellphone tower in this area, and that's why all the new guidelines are there, including the eighty percent coverage. That's why this location is not congruent with the new terms because it doesn't have eighty percent coverage. Uh, you're going to have a two-hundred-foot tall tower, which is, uh, twice the height of any of the other monopoles. The one might be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet, but this is twice the height. In the middle of this grassy field, within very visual terms of the highway, you're going to stick twice the height of the Alex Johnson. Alex Johnson is ten stories, so that's a hundred and ten feet. You're going to stick something twice that size right here. That's going to overpower the aesthetics of every lot within a half a mile, or, excuse me, a quarter mile. This piece of property and the subject piece of property that you guys are talking about were both one-piece, and that was the old sawmill that was up there. I own the west half, Joe owns the east half. We were forced by this very body to change this zoning from heavy industrial to the present zoning. I have the PUD that's right here. We did that because we have the views of the canyon and we have desirable home locations, which we have no current plans to develop. We never have, but in the future, ten, twenty, thirty years, if we, that ever comes to that, we can place that in there. This was zone general commercial because at the time, Joe stated he wanted storage units. And the commission had very critical ideas about that because they wanted no industrial development of this area. It was heavy industrial. And the county commission came to us and told us not to have industrial development in this place. So this body wanted this very development type to not occur there, and that was less than ten years ago, because I was part of that process at that time. So, most of the community up there is opposed to a tower, especially of this height, doesn't follow the guidelines that the, uh, moratorium that the planning commission put forth and doesn't have the eighty percent coverage, so it shouldn't be allowed. And it's deleterious to all the property up there because this is a primary residential. It was never designed and will not be designed to have high residential. We've already discussed those pro- those issues, but placing this tower up there causes everybody's property values to decrease significantly. I'm on three sides of it. Excuse me, two sides of it. I do not want this tower up there. Verizon came to me to put the tower right there, and I denied them. The tower does not belong up there.
Questions for Dr. Swanson?
Thanks.
Are there anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is, excuse me, my name is Gail Jorgensen. I'm not a fan of Verizon. Uh, I think they're, any of the cellphone, uh, plans are overpriced, but, uh, as far as this tower is concerned, it has to be someplace, uh, it needs to be where there's electricity close by, roads for access to it. Uh, it needs to be in a high point. It's not for the people in that air, general area because they already maybe, probably have service from town, but it's for the general area on out, spread out from there. We need more coverage in the hills, and evidently, Ri- Verizon would not spend several hundred thousand dollars to put up this size tower if it wasn't needed. I guess I, I would have even supported a bear tower. I didn't know it was a Christmas tree type, which it evidently is here. I'm very familiar with that area. I know Joe Theberg, and I know where the sawmill was and everything. I didn't exactly understand where it was. Was it going to be put right about in there, as I understood, PJ?
No, sir.
Did you want to point to where you thought it was going to be? This is Theberg's house right here, the white spot or dot. Oh, out in the middle of there, right? Well, it could have been, probably been put more into the trees, I guess, but still, I think, I think it's needed, uh, I'm on AT&amp;T, so this is not something I'm going to gain or lose one way or another unless, uh, unless they let AT&amp;T put a, a dish on the tower. I don't know what else to say on it, I guess, but, uh, got one problem here. Doc Swanson is my dentist, and I have an appointment for a, for a filling this morning. This is not going to be good. This afternoon, I mean, it's two-thirty this afternoon. I guess I support the tower, and whether it's exactly in that spot, uh, I don't know. I didn't really know where it was going to be. I knew it was on, supposedly on Theberg's property, but, uh, as I understood, Theberg doesn't own that, uh, sawmill property. I understand, uh, the, uh, the attorneys own that, but I mean, maybe I'm wrong, so...
Questions for Mr. Jorgensen? Thank you.
Okay.
I, I would make a comment, a couple of things that have come up, uh, not so much on your comments, but, um, the eighty percent, um, I guess, you know, the one thing that I kind of wonder, uh, I just had that here. This is when feasible, eighty percent, uh, of the height of the tower, and yet our same rules allow a hundred and ninety-nine feet, so basically you're saying that all trees have to be a hundred and sixty feet. I think you're going to find hard time getting ponderosa pines that are typically a hundred and sixty feet. So I think, uh, the, the, the verbiage there for when feasible is intentionally there. I guess the other thing, I did ask a pointed question on monopoles versus, you know, the fake tree, uh, if I recall, and it was before, I think, any of us were on the planning commission, but the first time Verizon came in, I was with a monopole, and they were told, "Come back with the tree." So, uh, anyway, getting different messages. But, uh, anyone else wishing to speak on this before I go back to the applicants representative? If you want to, I believe you wanted to speak tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, and, and I would like to say, I, I greatly appreciate all the comments of, of the neighbors here. And unfortunately, when it comes to building communications facilities, there's just not an ideal, uh, an ideal place to put a, a tower where, where a neighbor isn't going to be upset. But, uh, we, we put up the facilities. It's the, it's the best way to, to provide the service that, uh, that's greatly in demand by, by consumers. And, uh, we look to local, locals owning requirements, and, and in this case, uh, Mr. Teberge's property is the highest priority site in, in the vicinity that could feasibly, uh, meet RF objectives for this particular project. Our objective is not to cover the entire Black Hills, uh, at this time. I mean, not, our objective right here is to provide coverage in a, in a hole where, uh, where, where we can see from propagation maps that there are coverage issues. And, uh, as to, as to property values, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a subjective argument, as Mr. Coleman pointed out, other, other uses could go here on this property that, that, uh, may or may not affect property values. I've also heard it, uh, stated that having a, having a, a strong reliable signal is also a benefit. Uh, I did, uh, I did find out, uh, uh, through the CDC that, um, actually as of, uh, the end of two thousand and thirteen, uh, thirty-one point one percent of households in South Dakota no longer have a landline. They strictly rely on their wireless coverage. Another twenty-two point nine percent, uh, are wireless mostly, so that's fifty-four percent of, of households in, in South Dakota that, that would rather or simply, all they, all they can use is a wireless phone. All they, they, all they've chosen to use is wireless phones, so, um, moving the tower elsewhere, um, you know, we've come back to this, to this very specific location three times now. Moving it elsewhere is certainly not going to improve the matter, uh, in, in terms of coverage. And, um, if we do, if we were to, if we were to move it, we'd be moving it off of a, off, off of a higher priority to a lower priority site in terms of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, so, um, that's all my comments for now. I'd be happy to answer any questions and...
I guess, two questions I had, I guess, uh, could you respond, I guess, to the comment about the Forest Service or your knowledge of that? I mean, uh, both, i- if it's allowed, and does that technically work for a location?
Technically, I, it, 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 it would work to some degree. Would it, would it improve or diminish? I would argue that it would probably diminish the, the coverage objective that we'd be able to obtain on the Teberge property, um, because it's been considered for so long by Verizon, and this is our, our third application right here in this area.
And I guess my second question that I have before I go to other members of the planning commission is that, you know, the past go-around, this go-around, the, the biggest issue that we seem to hear is the height of the tower. And I think you made a comment earlier that you could cover it with one location, a taller tower here, if it's a, a shorter tower, it'd take multiple locations, but, uh, my understanding is that it would be possible to get the coverage you desire with multiple smaller towers?
It'd be very challenging. It'd be expensive. The, the preference would be to, to stick with one tower, certainly.
Uh, and, uh, is it this site? Because like one of the, I think, the last time, I think, you came back is, is a hundred and ninety feet, and that came down to a hundred and sixty-five, if I recall right. Now we're back up to the hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-nine, so...
Verizon demonstrates there that, that that higher height is their preference. But they, I, I think in that, making that concession the last time, uh, they'd be, they evidently, it would, it would be okay. Uh, we, the signal wouldn't propagate as far, but they were willing to accept that.
Are there questions from the planning commission? Karen?
Um, have you actually talked to the Forest Service?
Uh, I have not personally. Uh, this, this project has been around for, since two thousand and eight. It came into my purview, uh, pretty far into the process with the, the Teberge, uh, site, but, uh, my predecessor, John Rowe, did speak with, uh, a number of properties. Which properties he spoke to, I'm not sure of.
With the Forest Service, or do you don't know?
I'm not sure.
If he spoke with them?
That, that was my question too, about the Forest Service, because i- if I can remember, I hope, from the last go-around on this, I don't think Forest Service as a possibility was ever mentioned. And if it is a possibility, I would like to know, um, why it hasn't been considered.
Tim or Bill, any questions?
The, the other thing that I had is it was mentioned that, that coverage is available for Verizon if they rent from other carriers. And I can understand why a business always wants to own their own because it's cost-effective, but considering all the things that are brought up here, if coverage is available, then this isn't necessary.
I, I mentioned earlier too, but the two sites, uh, both west and east, Verizon is on those sites. And those are just, if those were adequate, we wouldn't be pursuing building another tower between those two.
One more. If you did build this tower, would you be able to, um, vacate the other two tower locations or would you still be using those?
We'll still have to use those.
Any other questions? Phil?
I know the, uh, gentleman said that the Bradskys, you know, that own the north side of forty-four were in a, in opposition to this location, but has anyone talked to them about a location on the north side, which is higher than this location?
I'd have to ask Mr. Rowe, my predecessor.
Because it, it, it appears from this map that there's a, the westerly most portion of that property on the north side, which is higher considerably than this location, would be an option.
I would say, and part of the reason we moved from the property to the east to, to the current location is, is, really has to do with the, the county zoning requirements. This gen- this, this parcel's own general commercial is a higher priority site then. I'd have to demonstrate why that, why the general commercial site wouldn't work, and, and I can't. It's, it's, it's a viable property.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Staff's recommendation is to approve with ten conditions. Uh, anyone who want to enter a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, um, move that we continue this for a month to, Jerry, can you, what would be the first meeting in June? To the June eighth meeting, and ask that, uh, that Mr. Cabot go and speak with the Forest Service about possible... about possible sites? Or at least whether or not they might entertain a telecommunications facility.
I'll second that.
My motion is second. Any further discussion?
Let me just make one comment. I mean, the frustration of an issue like this is that we're really trying to provide a public service or public utility service to a lot of people. And a few people are going to have to bear the burden. And that's unfortunate. It truly is. If there were a thousand houses out in that area instead of a few dozen, it would probably be a somewhat different battle here. But I mean, ultimately, that's what it comes down to. We're providing, or Verizon is providing, a service to a large number of people. And a small but significant minority are going to have to bear that burden if we put it in this location. And that is unfortunately the nub of the whole thing. And I don't know quite how we avoid that. Because one could argue that many, many people will profit personally from this thing, not profit financially, but profit in terms of their coverage. And most of us would argue, in the abstract, that's a good thing. But when it comes right down to the particular issue, it may not be. So anyway, we want to keep that in mind, I think.
Your chair?
I'd also like to keep in mind that the expert testimony is coming only from Verizon. There's no independent expert testimony. And I don't know how that can be corrected, but it stands.
Karen?
Chair, I understand Jim's point. But I think we also need to remember Ms. Crawford's point that this is a scenic highway. And I got to say, it's not such a scenic thing, the monopole. And because our economy is so heavily dependent on tourism, I think we need to consider that as part of our vote on this issue. And just from hearing the discussion here this morning, I'd say that you might want to continue this because I think there's enough opposition up here right now and you need four votes today that you might not get it.
For discussion, I guess, PJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but this goes, either way, this goes, we're a recommending body to the county board. This isn't a conditional use permit, so I mean, the final action is by the county board, correct?
Yes. And any decision you make could be appealed as well.
Right. And I guess what I'm getting at is maybe an option. We do have a motion and second on the floor. But what an option would be to deny without prejudice? And then they would have the opportunity to research the Forest Service property and come back without repaying a fee.
Jerry's indicated telecommunications, these permits do not go to the board unless appealed.
Okay, unless appealed, okay. Okay, I wasn't sure on that, whether just conditional use that we had the final, okay. But okay. But I guess that would be the other option that basically could get them to look at the Forest Service and they could come back if they found a site and no cost for application.
I'd like to ask the applicant what she would prefer.
If you could step up to the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My choices are continuance or denial without prejudice.
Denial without prejudice, which means you would not have to repay fees.
The motion on the floor anyway is for basically for continuance right now.
But for a month, right?
Yeah.
I would say a continuance. And we will look. I'm looking at my propagation maps provided by Verizon. And we'll see what the Forest Service says. I, you know, right now, the site is pretty much in the middle of this area that we're trying to cover. And I, we'll see. I mean, all we can do is take a look at propagation and see what happens. But, you know, I would suspect that we'll end up with some coverage issues if we move the site. But I am grateful for your consideration here and would be fine with continuance and see you next month.
Anyway, I guess, why I brought that up for discussion is, I mean, to me, it sends a little stronger message. You better come back with a site that
Better site.
Rather than thinking that this site is, I think, I don't think today you're going to get four votes. Is the feeling I would have. Anyway, so, but right now, the motion is for
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I don't, I've not dealt with the Forest Service. I don't know what their response timeframe is like. I wonder if maybe two months is more appropriate.
Pretty bureaucratic.
Two months or years.
Let's hope not. We've been trying to get this site since 2008.
I'm just saying the Forest Service hasn't been quick to respond on some things. So two months may be more appropriate.
I will amend my motion to two months.
Who's the second or, Bill?
July 13th.
July 13th.
Motion second that's been amended to continue to July 13th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We've been here for, before we go on to the next item, why don't we take a five-minute recess if you're parked on the street and not in the parking ramp? Or there is a two-hour limit, so if you need to shuffle your car, I would suggest doing so. City is the one that enforces the parking on the streets, so we can't waive those parking fees. Anyway, we'll reconvene at 5:00 after 11:00. Item 20, construction permit, road district.
Good morning, Brittany Molliner. Item 20 is a Summer Creek Road District construction permit. This was continued from the April 13, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. You guys had recommended continuance till they could hold their road district meeting. Since that time, there's been a couple of things with the road district. They have submitted their application for road construction in the section line. And they have indicated to me that they have submitted their NOI and SWIP to South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. I have not gotten confirmation from them that they have received that yet. That's what I was checking, my email, to see if they had emailed me back. But I guess if you want to ask any questions, I don't know what happened at the road district meeting. So I don't know if that's, because that was the reason that you guys wanted to continue this.
I have a question.
Brittany, you said that the applicants have sent their SWIP to the state or
They have indicated to me, I haven't got confirmation from the state that they have
Have you received a copy?
I have not.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, okay, that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted confirmation from the state because that's my typical way of doing things. So I guess if there's any other questions, you guys have seen this on several occasions since October.
I have one more question about, it says in the update, May 11, that you issued a stop work order.
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Sure. There was a stop worker issued because we had not, they had not submitted their notice of intent to the state or their work within a construction line. So no work could be done in that area.
Okay.
So, and we were receiving messages or complaints regarding work continuing to be done. So, any other questions?
Jim, I think you have a question.
Yeah. Reacquaint us with our responsibility regarding road districts. Or I should say, are any jurisdictional or issues that we may have?
This work is just
Do we have any power to do anything here?
This work is being done within that road district. So they're just a body that's submitting an application, a construction application for the disturbances.
The operation of a road district is beyond our purview entirely.
Yes.
I mean, we're not responsible for that. Is that right? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that initially.
The road district is just the applicant in this case for the district.
Right.
Kinsley Groot with the State's Attorney's Office. Yes, it's a special use district. So it's its own political subdivision.
Right, okay. So if nefarious and evil things are going on there, how do we correct those? Do the people, the complainants, go to you?
Yeah, they actually start with the sheriff's office. And an investigator would be assigned and would basically do the investigation.
Okay, very good. That was my, thank you.
The construction's permit still has to be issued by the county, correct?
Yes, yes, because it's still with the land disturbance. So staff is recommending approval of the construction permit with 14 conditions.
Questions for Brittany? Barb?
Brittany, on the second page here, you talk about numerous complaints twice. And that's kind of vague. I mean, is it 50 or two? Or what are numerous complaints?
There was a period where I was receiving them daily. They've gone down to probably once or twice a week at this point.
All from the same person?
No.
Okay, so it's still kind of vague.
I mean, I can put that information together, but it would take staff a considerable amount of time, I mean, to get a number. I've been working with the applicants, trying to get this resolved. I guess some of the complaints that have to do with this can't get resolved until they get a construction permit. So our office is kind of stuck between that, I guess. Because the complaints have to do with construction. They don't have a valid construction permit. There was work done prior to them getting a construction permit. So this is kind of a difficult situation for our staff to be in because we're going to continue to get complaints until they get an approved construction permit. And that's up to you guys at this point. So in order to bring them into compliance.
Okay, but I'm confused. Are they still working out there in the absence of a construction permit? Is that what you're saying?
They were. There was, there was, there's many things that are going out there. There's the road district, as you guys know. There's the private property, so they were excavating out an area and stockpiling in areas and putting it on roads in the road district. And then there's a building permit to level an area for a 50 by 105 garage or something to that effect. So between those three, there was all kinds of different, well, what does it pertain to? In our building permits, we allow construction that pertains to building that building permit to not be under the building permit. So, but then we come to find out they're building a 10-foot tall retaining wall, which we require a building permit for. So there's many things that are going on in this area that we've been trying to get our head wrapped around, I guess.
But my understanding, correct me, like the section line where it's gone, you know, there's been spoil. That's basically your material place that's onto the Forest Service lands. They can't really clean that up until they get a construction permit. Where the drainage has been blocked and, you know, possibly putting, redirecting flow onto somebody else's property, they can't really correct that until they get the construction permit.
Correct. So we're kind of like in this standoff, I guess, in so many words. I mean, in order to correct some of the things that have gone on, the things that have gone on have gone on without a construction permit. So if, so now here we are trying to get approval after the fact.
Given the history of this and the complaints, I guess, is it fair to say that there'd be more attention placed on the cleanup of the previous problems than we would maybe on the other site, construction permit site?
No, they would be treated the same. They do have to get a state.
Well, but here there's compliance issues, basically cleanups. I mean, to me, it's, that's not undue burden on them. It's, they've got issues that are, need, that have been identified that are really out of compliance that they need to bring into compliance. I mean, I guess, you know, I know our staff is thin on time, but I mean, it seems like some of these needs attention.
Sure. And we do site visits on all the construction permits periodically. And, you know, if we get complaints or concerns on them, we, you know, address them when we can. And so that's, we would treat it the same as we would any other construction permit that we would get complaints or do site visits like we do any of the other ones.
Okay. Other questions for Brittany? Send the applicant's, oh, Barb?
I just get so confused because there are violations and they are not being dealt with.
The only way that the violations can be remedied is by getting an approved construction permit at this time. Because they did the construction without the permit. They did the disturbance without a permit.
That seems to me to be the violation.
It is. I mean, we could turn them over to the State's Attorney's Office, but what they would require them is to get their permit. So, I mean, it's kind of that.
So what you're saying is they have to have, they have to have the permit before they can correct the violations?
Well, they could remove everything and stuff.
Before they can legally
Put it all back, reclamation it. But, I mean, they did all of the disturbance without an approved permit.
Right, but now they can't correct what they screwed up originally until they have a permit.
Essentially, they have to stop all work. They can stabilize the area, but they can't continue to do construction.
But they can't rectify what they've previously done. I mean, as far as the violations. So it's a catch-22 situation that we're in.
That's the penalty to correct the situation. Is that right?
To get the permits.
Once they get the permit, then we say, okay, now you got to correct this because you've made a mess here. So they make, they correct it. Is that the idea? I mean, I'm confused. It seems to me that in the absence of this construction permit, there would be some kind of penalty of some sort. I, yeah, and if the penalty is simply, then you got to go out there and correct the situation, which maybe that's it. I don't know. But, you know, it seems, I think I'm very frustrated by this whole thing.
To be honest, I haven't had one like this before, so I couldn't tell you.
I'm sure this is a rare.
To me, I mean, any activity like that needs a permit. So I mean, I understand where to move forward and clean it up. You want them in compliance with the permitting act. So, I mean, it does seem in some ways backwards.
Well, and I assume that they can be correct, this is something that sort of can be corrected. If they put a pile of debris someplace, it can be moved. And we will be back to square one, which is not always the case in something in which, some kind of violation, you know.
Well, I guess, and I guess, I'm assuming it's not only to correct that, but they're also asking for a permit to continue doing what they wanted to do, but now they're going to do it properly. Reestablish the drainage. So I mean, it's kind of both cleaning it up and moving forward with their plan.
Well, I'm eager to have this resolved, but we all are, I'm sure.
Yes.
Well, let's just finish with staff questions first. Any further questions for Brittany before I move to the applicant? Now, if you guys want to come on, thanks.
Good morning. I'm Dan Vanzlister representing Summer Creek Road District. Brittany stated that there wasn't any kind of permit. We did have an issuance, at least my understanding, of a construction permit when the bulk of the excavation and placing of base material on a stockpile in two of the Summer Creek Road locations. After she had received some complaints, it was my understanding that they requested an amendment to that construction permit. And that's when it was continued or, no, that's when the board asked for them to be split into two separate entities, a construction permit for Summer Creek Road District and a construction permit for our personal projects, which we did. It was the last meeting that they also had a continuance for the Summer Creek Road District construction permit to address the permit issue for the section line right away, which we immediately did. And that we filed a notice of intent and a SWIP with the state, the ENR, which we did. So what I just heard sounded like we didn't have a construction permit when all of this happened. That's not true. We did have a construction permit. But it's when we came in to do the amendment that I thought it was.
Well, and I guess my understanding from Well, and I guess my understanding from previous testimony is that.
I can pull up the original permit and what it was for, and not all of the work was included in the permit. That's why.
That's what I was going to get. It's it's more an amendment. There was work that was outside of the originally permitted construction.
Correct, but I I just wanted to make it clear that I didn't do everything without a construction permit. I placed some material on a couple of applications that that I didn't have an amendment for.
Okay.
Hey, I'm Kent Hager, represent the Summer Creek Road District. Part of the history on the reason we came back here on this date after the fifth because that was when the statutory requirement for the first for the road district to be held. That was held. Now, we did that in close concert with the auditor's office, made sure that things were being done correctly for this particular road district and how things are done generally and statutorily appropriate. The other reason, I think, for the continuous too, was that because evangelistos have construction activity and the road district, and it's essentially in the same area, there was a lot of confusion overlapping. And even even today, the agenda items is Nancy and Dan and Nancy Evangelisto perend Summer Creek Road District. So, you know, that's just another thing that they're not the applicant on this, the road district is. But coming back here in part was due to try to separate the ball of worms a little bit and say, okay, this is road district, this is evangelistos, and this has got to be separated and handled with staff and get it to get everything straight and then come again today before the body. Both requests, applications are being recommended for approval because that process is now taking place. And that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Questions for Dan or Kent? No questions at this point. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to address item twenty?
I had four of these, but there's four different. Let me make sure I won't move anything to share. Good morning. My name's Gary Briggs.
Sorry, I'm going to get you a map up, so you can keep talking.
I have a house at one two seven nine nine Taylor Ranch Road. You know, I I appreciate the fact, you know, that this road district is not really under you, but but there are some things that do tie this together. So I gave you a the first picture you're going to you'll see. Picture number one is Summer Creek Drive as you look from Taylor Ranch Road to the south, right next to the Evangelistos Bed and Breakfast. You'll see that that road is nicely graded, well gravelled. The second picture you see is looking past their bed and breakfast, up the hill further, which is, again, it's still Summer Creek Road, Summer Creek Drive. I live at the top of that hill. You can see there's a vast difference between the where they're at and the road up that goes up to my place, even though it's the same road. So then we talk about and and there was a meeting. I I was a meeting and keep in mind that Dan Evangelisto voted got voted president. Nancy Evangelisto, I believe, is the treasurer's secretary. And you'll see on their the road district membership, they have divided their property into seven or eight different entities, LLCs, kids, relatives. They diluted the votes enough that the rest of us that are here really have no say. And and the the one thing that ties this together is when we talk about what we're doing now and what we're doing then, you're all well meaning meaning people and you and you give out a permit and you you assume that rules will be followed. And and ninety-nine percent of the time, people intend to follow the rules. But there are sometimes, you know, it to build a bed and breakfast on on this property would probably would have been difficult to get past the board because it's kind of a commercial entity. So they built the house first, then they changed it into a bed and breakfast after it was built. It's already built now. What are you going to do? You talked also earlier about how does how does a storage building get built in a residential area? There's a good there's a good point. Back in around two thousand seven or two thousand eight, Evangelistos took out a permit to build a house and a big detached garage on lot number twenty-seven in this subdivision. The detached garage got built. The house never got built, never, not today. This is we're talking quite a while now. The detached garage turned into a storage building. There it sits all by itself. It's up the hill from their place, so they can't see it. They didn't even bother to paint it. It's unpainted. It's a storage facility. It was built too close to the road, didn't have twenty-five foot setback. What'd they do? They moved the road. And I I can't, you know, when it comes to, you know, how do you how do you correct items like this? It's already built. When it's built, you know, the county can't go out there and really say, well, tear it down. That's and that's the problem with when a permit is issued to people and rules don't get followed, what's the fine? What's the penalty? You talked about fines and penalty, and you'll see on the list. And in fact, you know, they dumped a lot of dirt spoils on the Forest Service. What's the penalty? What's the fine? They don't plan on paying for it. Look at the cost breakdown estimate for the road district. Very first thing at the top of the list, Siskin Loop regrade gravel and hydro seed. They don't plan on paying for it. You're not penalizing them. You're penalizing us. We are the members of the road district. We're the ones paying tax to the county. County gives the money to the road district. We're being penalized, not them. Another point of view, he talked about the stormwater inspection protection plan, which he was supposed to provide because of the damage he did and all the spoils that he moved. Right on the list. He's not paying for it. We have to pay for it. We're in the road district. He had a permit to level some land and for this big storage. He's calling it a storage shed at this time and and to put in culverts down there. Now, that's a private development. He's doing this on his own. He ought to pay for his own culverts. If I put in an access to a piece of my property, I expect to put in my own culvert. Not him. He's got it down as charging it to the road district again. So that's that's our problem. I mean, that's how do you penalize them for doing something wrong? They went up there, they dumped dirt everywhere. They dumped it on the Forest Service. They dumped it on the road. They dumped it on a lot down by me. They never came out. They never put any dust control in, water control in. How do you penalize them without penalizing us? I mean, that's a big issue here. Now, he's got in here, this is his his, he wrote this up, his projected plan for two thousand fifteen. And it's between twenty-two thousand and twenty-six thousand dollars for a lot of this work that he's proposing to do. There's only nineteen hundred dollars left in the account. It's all been burnt up already. There's only nineteen hundred. So if there's only nineteen hundred dollars in the account, but he wants twenty-two thousand, twenty-six thousand, how's he going to get the money? As president, as secretary and treasurer, he has the power to assess our property. If we don't pay the assessment, he has the power to put a lien on our property. So you're not penalizing them. You're penalizing us. You're making us pay for the damage he did. You're making us pay for private development that he wants to do. And for for those reasons, I I sincerely request you deny any permit to build anything. Things have to be corrected. It has to be the person who does the crime should pay the penalty, not the rest of the people in the neighborhood.
I've allowed you some leeway, and really, you know, the thing before us is a construction permit. You're giving us a lot of history and a lot of information on. And I know a lot of these issues, just like when we were talking about the tower. I mean, it's hard sometimes to keep it on track, but it's a lot of that's a civil matter. If you feel like they violated the law by overstepping their reach in their positions on the road district, that's not any action that we can address at this point or nor can we penalize them for that. I mean, the it's it's really becomes a civil action. I guess, Kinsley, jump in anytime if I'm wrong on that, but I.
But it is a permitting issue. And and just like building a storage shed without the house. I mean, that's if when you give out a permit and you you don't have enough people, no county ever has enough people to be out there and policing what's going on. And it just doesn't in in this case with these people, it hasn't been working very well. And and something, you know, things have to change, I think.
Well, and I guess the comment I would have is, I mean, our rules can't cover everything. I mean, just like we we mean, obviously, by our vote, every and I appreciate all your patience. It's been a long morning for you guys sitting in here. But you just like on the previous item on the garage, you know, obviously, there's a vote that we really don't want to see a garage, but he can come back and put a garage and put living quarters in it, and we can't control it. It's permitted. It's it's a building permit. It's a residence at that point. You know, so there are certain things that we can't control. If it's, you know, the road district issues, we can't jump in as a governmental body of its own. So I guess.
Yeah, and okay, so in terms of everything that's going on with the road district, it is something that there are potential criminal ramifications for doing things incorrectly in a road district. Or there's also civil lawsuits that could be brought if there are there are some sort of misappropriation of funds or something like that. So that can all be taken care of criminally and civilly and not in front of this commission. Again, I guess there was an original question about the construction permit. And if the state's attorney's office was to take action at this point, it would be basically to have an injunction be put into place and see if the court could potentially order the removal of some of the stockpiling being, you know, having it put back into its original location. And then from there, and there's probably a problem with it being put in its original location because there may be issues with drainage, stormwater protection, all of that, because it's no longer covered by natural vegetation, things like that. So again, I I think the whole point is that this be moved forward with the construction permit and just focus on that as opposed to any sort of malfeasance, misappropriation of funds within the road district because that can be handled by the state's attorney's office. And, you know, that's something that we're looking into. So that would be my two cents on the.
Oh, that's why I was, I mean, I'm trying to bring you back to what the topic is in the agenda item and.
Right, and and are we dealing with mitigation? Or are we dealing with a permit to build?
I think it's both.
Yes, and and that's where I guess we have a problem is mitigation. I think we all agree. It it should be corrected. But to give a permit to do anything, given given the history, given a permit at this time to do more than mitigate, to me is questionable, very questionable. Thank you.
Well, and and again, you know, probably getting into legal matters that are, I think, beyond our, you know, we can't penalize for, we we can get them to try to correct it, but we can't penalize them for future work. This is the wrong body to do that.
Just one quick, under the construction permit, you guys can require bonding if there's concerns about reclamation or anything like that. There is a.
We can what?
You can require bonding.
Oh, bond.
Bonding or performance bond. Or the actually, the planning director can also, so if there's concerns about reclamation. So just information.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? And and please, I guess, anyone coming forward, you know, if you have, let's not repeat what's been discussed already and and again, try to keep it on topic, so.
I will.
Thank you.
My name's Donna Messer, and I am a neighbor and a road district member. And I will read to you because I prefer that rather than just public speaking. And I would like to speak to you about these two permits the evangelistos are seeking. And I wish that it was easy to address each individually, but that as they're outlined in your agenda, but they are tied together and each directly affects our neighborhood. Some of what I have to say pertains to the Summer Creek Road District meeting that was held on the fifth. It's relevant information as it's my understanding that these permits were postponed until the evangelistos could get the blessing of the road district members to continue. Since we were there last or since we were here last, the evangelistos have established two new LLCs and for a total of three. They have deeded thirteen lots to family members and sold one lot to a family friend. Now, these acts obviously are not illegal or unorthodox in a standalone situation. But given the fact that these took place within days after the the planning and zoning meeting and prior to the road district meeting, and knowing they needed the road district approval, their timing seems very calculated. These actions are suspicious in nature as they would allow them more votes for their LLCs and proxies from family members to vote as they wish. To say the least, the road district has some functionality problems. Please indulge me the time that you to give you more details about the meeting as ultimately they do pertain to your decision on these permits today. Three of the seven homeowners are new. We felt very unfamiliar with the grand scheme of improvements that the road district trustees had in mind when it began. We have yet to be shown exactly where on plat map or bar napkin the intended layout of the improvements. What we do visually see is that Dan continues to gouge out the side of a hill, excavate for potential pavilion building and rework the roads that service Summer Creek and Bed and Breakfast first and foremost. Their defense will be that it is to maintain the road or that it is a main road and that they and they are right. However, the majority of homeowners do not utilize this road. At the road district meeting, we anticipate an opportunity to discuss and review what improvement what the improvements would entail, learn about the vision and the future plan. There was a time or question answer period, and when asked, many answers started with, that's irrelevant, or we were told we were being aggressive. There was virtually zero tolerance for any opposing view. When it came time for votes, as distorted as they were, magically, the votes came in favor of the of the evangelistos wishes. When we had this meeting, we voiced our concerns regarding a lack of change in the presidency and the secretary treasurer positions of our board of trustees. We wanted to bring to the treasurer's attend or to the trustees' attention that we felt the codified law was not being followed correctly. As soon as a member spoke about it, Nancy said it's irrelevant and turned to Dan and said we needed to adjourn this meeting. A member was still speaking and was overtalked, and Dan said, meeting adjourned. There was even a suggestion made that we come back to the table in a month to address unresolved concerns. It was spoken, but no trustee would acknowledge this proposal, at which point the trustees left the table. It was wholly unprofessional and considerate and rude behavior. Again, the reason I've taken your time is to deep with this detail is to let you know that the road district members do not give permission for these improvements regardless of the votes. At the April thirteenth planning and zoning meeting, Dan Evangelisto was informed he was not to excavate anymore until these permit issues were resolved. I believe there's been photo evidence and video evidence shared with the planning and zoning staff of his continued excavation work on multiple occasions, along with written complaints. At the rate he has been working, he will be done with the project before he even gets a permit. There have been phone calls, emails, complaints, all falling on deaf ears, and it's our tax dollars. And we would like an explanation why planning and zoning has not taken any action to shut them down. And I have just learned to my knowledge that it is now a state's attorney's issue. Another concern we'd like to address. Another concern we'd like to address is that bearing on your decision today, these permits. Is that the evangelists have applied for a commercial water permit with the Department of, uh, Environment and Natural Resources. They, we made ejection to this permit and the hearing was originally scheduled for May seventh. At the request of the evangelists, this hearing is now postponed until July. My reason for pointing this out is that the excavation and certainly the pavilion they seek to build. Will affect the water well system, drainage of these same roads they're trying to improve, ingress and egress of area roads, parking, general safety, and fire safety issues. Their purpose is to have this building for weddings, reunions, company parties, and the like. We feel there is not enough resource in land, water, and wastewater systems to provide for something of this magnitude. We are simple residents who wish to enjoy the quietude of our personal property without this kind of jeopardize, without this kind of jeopardy to our infrastructure. Commercialization, chaos, and noise, something this will bring to our area. My husband and I would respectfully request that until the D E N R has made their determination on the commercial water permit. That you make it mandatory that Dan Evangelisto, or anyone he should employ, or have volunteers cease any excavation for the pavilion. And stop all installation of culverts, water lines, and items associated with these permits. And thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, and I do think your, your presentation on the meeting was appropriate. Uh, that's one reason we continued to, today, after the, that meeting, so. Sure, we all hear different viewpoints on that.
I'm sure you will.
Questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Who owns most of the land out there? I mean, the lots?
Dan and Nancy.
Yeah, it, it seems to me you got a situation where you've got somebody who has a full house and the rest of the people are holding a pair. I, you know, I would say to you, vote those people out.
We tried.
But you can't do that because they've got a lot more leverage than you do because they own most of the land and quite frankly, that's their privilege, isn't it? I mean, I mean, that's, that's the difficulty. If you had a normal road district where you had fifty people and everybody owned one lot and everybody voted. And that was it, uh, we wouldn't have this difficulty.
And that's why we feel we're kind of in a standoff situation because the votes got diluted and they, you're a hundred percent correct. They own most of it. It was their privilege to do that, and it's not illegal. It's just underhanded.
Yeah, well, it's unpleasant, I'm sure, for you, but you either have to look for a judicial remedy or, you know, you have to, I guess. Bite your lip. I, I sympathize with your situation. We've all been in circumstances like that, but it's difficult for us to try to. You know, and the evangelists are within their rights. They, they, they have most of the property. They should have more leverage than anybody else. But that's the unfortunate situation and I just, I'm afraid we can't provide any remedy for you.
And I'm not sure it'd make much difference here, but is, uh, votes for the road district proportioned by area or by number of lots?
Is, is it one per lot?
It's one, yes, it's one per lot.
Okay. Like I said, in this case, I don't think it'd make any difference anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good day. Um, I'm Robbie Clausen. I live at, uh, two, three, two, one, one, Carbon Loop. The far left-hand squiggly line is my road and my property, or the road that goes to my property. Um, I guess, I guess I've got two points I kind of want to bring up. Um, at that road district meeting, I asked, uh. Dan, who was going to do the contracts or who was going to come out there and do the excavation and grade on the road, and he said he's got two bids out there, or one bid.
Currently, one in.
Um, but, uh, uh, just kind of curious, I mean. That's why we have a road district to get the roads improved, grade, whatever. But I, I would kind of just like to see who is going to get that contract or that bid before a permit's issued because then. What if that contract falls true, but he's still got a, a building permit or construction permit for these roads and it does get done, it doesn't get done? You know, kind of where I'm going with that. Also, my other, I guess my point, you know, as far as the violations, whatever that got brought up. I guess what would, what would happen if, uh, Jim Skull or Hills Material or Heavy Construction were just to go out and start building a road or excavating a hillside without a permit? I mean, there, there has to be some governing body or somebody that says, you know, here's, here's your fine, don't do it again. Or, I mean, it's not, well, we're gonna, we're gonna give you the permit later on and just don't do it again. I guess that's, doesn't make sense to me and that's kind of why all the complaints for me and the other, the other homeowners up there are like, seriously, you guys aren't going to do anything about this, but. So, those are the two points that I have without repeating everybody else, so.
Are there questions for Robbie?
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name is Don Behrens. Uh, most of the issues have been covered by everyone at this point. My concern is this, you know, our family's been here since eighteen hundreds. And I just do not get how he operates without permits. He continues his work on a stop work order. The guy doesn't slow down. Now you want to give him a permit, and I see your angle. But there's no ramifications for what's happened in the past. Well, why can't I do the same thing? You know, I think I'll develop and put a bed and breakfast in. I don't need a permit. That's, uh, and I think you should require a bond. I, I don't know what options there are with that. I know in developments they do do that. I just, uh. I, I just don't have anything else to say. I just, I just can't get past that. You know, I've been in business my whole life. And I've had to have my permits to do the things the right way. I came here for a conditional use permit eight months ago. I did everything that you ask to the T. I'm not trying to skirt anything. I'm not trying to hide. I'm not, I'm not, I don't bring an attorney with me to a meeting. You know, what's going on? It, it just, something's amiss and I, I've been talking to George Farabee, who couldn't get in today because of the weather. About trying to mediate with Dan on this and we could all sit down and try to resolve this. And see if we could work forward. It saves a commissioned amount of time. It saves us amount of time. We, we get it in writing. Because what these people say isn't what they're going to do. And I'm, I'm sorry that George couldn't be here today because he was going to recommend that we, we'd not give them the permit. Try to work out something and go to the next meeting and see if we could sit down and figure this out. And I think he'd spoke to you too, Dan.
Yeah, and he did not say he was going to recommend it. Now, listen to all the issues.
Address the chair, please, yeah.
I agree.
Sit down, sit down.
Okay.
You're out of order right now.
And I apologize because I think George is snowed in. He can't get out. His phone went down and then we were trying to email and.
No.
So, we lost our communication because of the storm and. But, you know, I approached George because he's our, our commissioner for that particular area and explained what was going on. I, I want to work with people. That's, that's not our objective to, to, to build a wall. But we need, we need to get things in order and have a plan. What's, what's the plan for the development? We have a road district, district meeting and I said, well, what's the long-term plan? Or we're not ready to discuss that. I mean, we got to have some direction. That's, that's my point. And I, I, I'm sorry, I, I just can't figure out how the guy gets this far without the proper permits. And he just keeps rolling right along. I mean, I never got that, that chance when I was in business. That's all I got. And thank you very much for your time. I'm, I'm sorry, a little upset about it. It just.
I, I think we're all at a little bit of loss on the situation, but.
And I feel sorry for you people because you're caught in the middle of the whole thing.
Well, and one of the things that I guess, you know, from testimony before, and I don't know this to be true, but I mean, like, if. We require a bond, there's a cost to bonds. Is that going to get, is that a road district cost that gets passed to everyone? Uh, you know, so, so I mean, bonding may not be the answer either.
Okay, well, I'm not that.
I don't, I don't know that.
All that works, so.
Yeah, and we're not privy to the books of the road district and how that's being worked either, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak that hasn't had a chance yet? Dan, I.
Dan Evangelisto again. I, George had called me.
I just didn't want to get back and forth.
No, that's fine. I understand. Um, I apologize. George did call me late on, I think he called, left a message on Friday morning. I resp, I got home in the afternoon, late evening, called George back. He said that. Don had called and wanted to set up a meeting sometime before this week. He wanted it to happen this week and before this meeting. Um, and I just told him we were extremely busy at the end, uh, Mother's Day weekend. I, I didn't have time to have a meeting with the other homeowners at that time. And that I would be willing to meet possibly in a week or two. I said, two or three weeks. George did not say he was going to vote against us. He said he would come as a commissioner would, sit, listen to both sides and then make his recommendation from there. So, for Don to say that George flat out said, I doubt that George had flat out said he was going to vote against us without hearing both sides, so that's all I had to say.
Don, I'll give you some liberty, but I don't want to get back and forth. We.
I stand corrected. He did not say he was going to vote against it. He wanted to vote for a continuation till we can have the, the meeting. Just so we're clear.
Thank you.
And if I misspoke, I want to correct that.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I guess, uh, the staff's recommendation is for approval of the construction permit with fourteen conditions. Anyone want to venture a motion either way?
Mr. Chair, could I have a question for Brittany? We've heard a lot of testimony on this issue and it appears to me that, um. There's a lot of aggravation here because there has not been good communication in the neighborhood. I understand the frustration of the neighbors because I don't believe that the evangelists have been good neighbors. And they keep saying there's nothing that we can do about this. Is that true, Brittany? Are there, are there no measures that we can take to tell Mr. Evangelisto that he needs to abide by the permits? And by the, by our zoning ordinance? Um, because he's flagrantly been in violation, as Barb said.
And I guess the, our next step would be to turn it to state's attorney's office, but that's typically if they don't come and get permits, and he did. Um, all the way back in November, he got a permit, that's the one he's talking about that he got approved, for lots ten, eleven, and twelve to grade that out.
Right.
Um, and then he wanted to amend that because he was stockpiling that all over. So. It's confusing for our office because now they say that the ten, eleven, and twelve has to do with their building permit and not their construction permit. But they didn't have this and then now they're stockpiling stuff from those lots onto roads in the road district. So, it's been a very confusing. You know, thing. And then once it's over ten thousand square feet, then you need construction permits and it's exceeded that. And then now that they're over an acre, they go to the state. So, there's just a lot of things that have to. You know, that have gone on over time with this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the, the ten, eleven, and twelve is for this building that they're going to build, correct? Lots ten, eleven, and twelve. And they have a building permit? Correct.
Yes.
And what's the building permit for?
For a fifty by hundred and five foot garage.
So, what is this pavilion? I, I'm confused about what this is all about.
Event center.
An event center?
That's what they said the last time.
The building permit we have in our office is for a.
Is it fifty by hundred and five? It's a garage.
It's a garage.
It's a garage.
Garage.
So, that's what we have. That's what he applied for. But that one probably more pertains to the next application and not the road district.
Yeah, I'm just, because, um, Ms. Clausen brought it up.
Sure.
But I just wanted to ask.
I believe I asked this at the last meeting, but I guess the one thing that I've just been kind of surprised that, I mean. For activity like this, I would expect engineered road plans, you know, cut fill balances, schedule of work, you know, uh. You know, it's, I understand the way this development got plotted and all that. I mean, it's, at this point, we don't have control of that. And I, to me, that's frustrating. I mean, to me, it's like, how can a road district move forward without a set of plans? How do you bid work by just saying point and say, do this, do that? And how do you give quantities without doing cut fill balance? Uh, I, it just.
And our, and our highway department did bring that up, but because it's in a road district, they. Just allow the road district. Unfortunately, they just had concerns that. Huh? They just had concerns about the amount of disturbance and the increasing the, the flow, the water quality capture volume. At this point, right here on Taylor Ranch Road. As part of the conditions, they do have to meet all the criteria in our stormwater manual and erosion control, which would. If that. At that point.
Not the same as an engineered road plan.
Right, right.
You know, I know. Well, and I guess like, I think the, the hopes of this commission continuing today was. We thought there would be some dialogue and discussion at the, at the road meet, district meeting. It doesn't sound like that occurred. Uh, Kent. Well, go ahead.
Could I ask a question first?
To Brittany or who you?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is, um, there are two terms being used, bed and breakfast and inn. Are they synonymous? Because they keep calling this. Facility an inn and yet it's designated bed and breakfast, so I'm a little confused about it.
We have a C U, a conditional use permit for it as a bed and breakfast.
Well, what then is an inn?
That's what we, it's called Summer Creek Inn, correct? And there's a conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast.
Would you like to address the difference, the clarification?
No, not, well.
I mean, the way that our office looks at it is a bed and breakfast, correct?
It's a licensing, it's a licensing.
Right, but the CUP calls it a bed and breakfast. So, that's what it's approved as.
Filings with the state may have different terminology than our requirements, so. But what Brittany's saying is permitted as a bed and breakfast. With this county, with the county. I guess any more questions for Brittany and then we go to Kent.
I guess I have one more question. Ms. Clausen also referred to, uh, uh, CUP, or actually, I can't remember what it was, where they applied for. Uh, to build a garage, um, before, uh, a primary residence and then never built a primary residence.
On lot twenty-seven?
Yeah. Is that, is that fact? I mean, I don't really.
There is a garage there.
And there was a.
I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, actually, I'll say on lots three, four, ten, eleven, and twelve is a specialty resort, CUP fourteen dash zero four. Did I answer your question? Is it inn versus a bed and breakfast?
Resort, bed and breakfast.
Yep, CUP fourteen dash zero four.
Any more questions? Anyone else? To Brittany, Kent, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a few points of clarification as to the, uh, much of the irrelevant statements that were brought up today. I'm trying not to compound on that. But one of the things to bear in mind, and I'd, I'd encourage the commission to bear in mind. Is that you're seeing, you know, three, four, five angry, uh, uh, neighbors. And this started before, approximately October, when my clients sought to put covenants, protective covenants on the entire subdivision to maintain quality, et cetera. Well, that initially started a backlash. They hired an attorney. We said, fine, we'll pull your lots out of the covenant, so that, okay, supposedly solved. And then they started. And then they started in a complaint with the state regarding the, the well, as she mentioned earlier. And the D E N R hearing that was continued was my request because I had a conflict on the seventh, which has no way I could be there. So it's not some nefarious juggling that we, that my clients were trying to do. And the other thing is, is that not only has there been at every turn, if there is a possibility of any type of regulatory establishment agency that can be complained to for whatever reason, they're doing it. And they are hell bent on making sure that their, my clients' lives are made very miserable. Maybe it has something to do with the water rates that have to go up somewhat because there's only a very limited number of users on a large expense. And that, that's part of it, too. We do, my clients do want to have a constructive relationship, having, having anger between neighbors is, is counterproductive on any level. They agree. My point is that we will continue to strive to have meetings and talk and try to understand their concerns. When they come before the podium and to point this point, they have come with a, with a level of vexatious, vexatiousness and maliciousness that is meant to make hardship on my clients. They're not the bad neighbors. I mean, in all due respect, Commissioner Hall, there are other neighbors out there that are just fine and very friendly. This is, this isn't, not everyone of them have pitchforks and torches, but some have also physically threatened. One has also physically threatened and technically assaulted my client on, on two occasions. So just some background, apologize for the irrelevance, but I think it's relevant when they open the door on it. But the job of the staff is to try to, again, untangle all these things between road district, between the, the bed and breakfast or inn, specialty resort, I guess you said, right?
Yes, that's what we have it as.
That's what it is, that's what it is, specialty resort.
So I apologize.
But the, the job of the staff is to address this stuff and come to this body with a recommendation. And it's easy to get sidetracked with, with malicious complaints. But one way to get this matter moving forward is get the permit issued, let the road district do what it needs to do under the supervision of the county staff and let it go forward. So we ask again that you please approve this permit so they can walk forward with this. As far as the road district meeting, there was a plan there, there was a plan presented. And it can certainly be subject to more discussion, but that is not relevant to this particular request for approval. Thanks.
Done.
Just a couple of quick notes. You know, Mr. Hague, excuse the issue that when you put covenances on properties you don't own, it's illegal. You can't do it. You know, he makes it sound like it's a gift that he took them back off. You, you can't do it to start with. And I think all of us would like to work together with these people. And that was part of the deal, was sitting down with George and trying to have a, a meeting and resolve these issues. I don't think any of us want to go back and forth. It's hard on all of us. I suggest that, you know, I wish George was here because I think he had a great idea, whether, whether they are open to that idea or not. Maybe it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
If you could step forward now.
Gary Briggs, they, they did bring up the fact that we are seeking other avenues, but like you said, we don't, you're not in charge of road districts, so we had no other choice but to seek other avenues. He brought up the point about the covenants. It wasn't just covenants about what kind of trees we planted and cars we drive and things like that. We also were supposed to pay them $20 a month for the, for, for thirty years the covenants ran. So to me, that, very upsetting, it seemed like extortion to me. So, and, and you asked a good question about the permit for the, how did that garage get built and not a house? I saw the permit, it's right upstairs. I went up there, they showed it to me and they said, yeah, he had a permit to build a house and a garage. And then there's a handwritten note on the permit, house not built. And, and the permit then died. But the garage, storage shed, storage shed is obviously still there. So, thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to continue this to the next meeting so that everyone concerned can have a session of mediation with Commissioner George Farabee.
If you have a second. I'd for lack of a second. I guess one comment that I would have, I'm not sure that we can, I don't know if that's why you didn't get a second, but I don't know if we can assign a specific county commissioner. Without the county board being involved in that.
Chairman.
I move approval of this permit fifteen oh eight.
One second.
A motion and second for approval of a construction permit. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Karen.
Brittany, is there any way that you can step up your inspections of this construction permit more than, you know, the regular two visits? I think that might appease some of the neighbors a little bit to know that, you know, that you guys are keeping a little closer track of this.
I mean, they are getting approval under the state, too. And I know the state's coming out this week and I'm meeting with them on some construction in the area, so, I mean, there will be, I mean, it's just like on a complaint basis like anything else, if they're meeting their conditions, you know, condition fourteen states that, you know, it can be brought in front of you guys again by, on a complaint basis or by the planning commission or the board of commissioners. So.
Yeah, but the, the problem with the complaint thing is, is then the neighbors complain, but you guys haven't been out there to see what's happened. And it seems to me you need to be on sort of a continual base. It doesn't need to be an elaborate inspection, but you need to be sort of keeping track of this thing for everyone's peace of mind, I think. I, I think that would be feasible. I can't imagine that, that, that wouldn't be feasible to, to keep a little tighter rein on, instead of, you know, inspecting when you get the permit and so forth and go out there a couple of times. I, I think that could be done. I can't imagine it couldn't.
That's, I think...
Is that what you were saying, Karen, or?
Yeah.
I, I think, I mean, obviously, you know, we've, not only this meeting, but other, we've had long discussions on this and obviously there's a lot of frustration. And I think it is that, you know, we think, it, it seems like there's, we're being legally outmaneuvered. And, you know, is there anything illegal? The ones that have, there's been stop work order and they're trying to get legal with construction permit to get back on track. But, uh, I think that's the frustration and why we, we're struggling up here. Come up to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy Evangelisto. I just wanted to point out that several weeks ago, I did email Brittany and suggest exactly what you are, Karen, proposing is having more onsite visits. Brittany, we've communicated via email and I have said that if there's any way, we are totally fine with them coming out. We've been trying to be as much compliant. We, like, every avenue, we try and do something, we hit a wall. So we have been more than willing to work with the county and make sure we are in compliant. There's been no intentional snubbing of the rules and not being in compliant. We have been trying really hard to be in compliant. So we are more than in favor of having weekly, monthly, whatever, onsite visits to make sure we are in compliance.
Well, I think that, and I, I don't want to necessarily speak for the planning department, but they're stretched on their staff.
Right.
Brittany's got more than her handful, I think, on other things. And the other thing is, I mean, there can be a backlash of, we don't know what, you know, maneuvering be, you know, we're getting scrutinized more than anybody else, you know, and so are we, are we going to hear that, you know?
I guess that's why I'm here to say...
Planning department's trying to be fair to all applicants.
And I understand that. And, and our goal is to get the project and the development done. We are doing, we do have lots of forty-some lots in there that we are trying to improve. We've got five new homeowners that moved in to a development that was already underway and are continually bringing up complaints. It's kind of like moving next to Walmart and complaining because there's traffic. You know, this was all underway before they moved in. Are there some violations? Or apparently there are, and we are trying to make them compliant. And that's why we're here today, making sure we are meeting all the county needs.
I, I would hope you would understand that when you've come in for a permit for a garage and then we're here it's an event center, how does that not raise flags to this commission?
Actually, we don't even know for sure. We may not even be doing that building because of the...
I believe, I believe you guys even stated that at the last meeting.
That we may not be doing this, any of this.
Oh, well, no, but I mean that that may be an event center. I think that was the terminology you guys even presented.
I don't think so. I, I don't think...
I may be wrong on that.
It is approved for that...
A garage.
That site is approved. We already have approval for weddings and events on our property.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying, you know, when we see a permit come from one thing and then it's basically being redirected another, it, it raises flags.
And we understand that.
Anyway, right now we have a motion and second for approval of the construction permit. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, really, this is going to put quite a burden on the planning and zoning department. And it just seems out of line.
Any further discussion, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
I want to do a roll call, make sure, we had, I believe we had four one.
Jim?
Yes.
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 Nay.
Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is construction permit CP fifteen zero nine to grade level on area hillside in order to construct a building, stockpile material at other locations of the property and to level and grade an area for an overflow parking lot. This is actually the private portion of the subdivision versus the road district portion, the subdivision. So there's the area that they've graded, some pictures. So at this point, I don't know, staff is recommending approval with twelve conditions. This is work that's already been done. A portion of it was done previously under a construction permit that was back in October that you, that they came back and amended, that you guys denied, and then here we are again. So because there was more work going on than what the original construction permit had indicated.
Questions for Brittany? I don't know, Brittany or PJ, I guess, what, what is the process for like a development bond or developer letter of agreement? Given the situation and all the discussion. I know, Kinsley, is that more in your court?
I hope we've done one for a while, but basically it's just like a contract. They'd put a, down a certain amount of money and agree to the terms. And if they don't abide by them, then at that point, they forfeit the money and it's up to the county to contract out for the bond. So we'd have to discuss doing that, but that would be advisable in this situation with all the issues that have...
And that can just be added as a staff, as part of amended to the staff's recommendations for conditions?
Yes, I believe so.
Right. Under performance bond, it says the planning director may require a construction permit issued under this section to post a performance bond for any control measures, stabilization, or other work proposed in the applicant's site plan or SWIP.
Okay.
So in the past, what they do is, the one that we have, we have one currently right now, when they have like line items and costs associated with those line items, and in order to release them, those line items have to be completed. And usually myself and Wes from the highway department go out and do the inspections.
And that wasn't part of the staff's recommendations at this point?
No, it was not.
Is that, because you'd rather hear it from the planning commission, I assume?
So, Brittany, so that, that would provide a device where you would be out there more often than normal, under normal circumstance, if there was a bond involved? I mean, you're responsible for ticking off the...
Well, they would have to let us know if they wanted that amount of money released from their letter of credit or their bond.
You'd have to go out and look, right?
We'd have to go out and look, yes.
Which means you would be there more frequently than normal, I assume.
Correct. But under the subdivision also, when, once, as part of their NOI and their SWIP, they do have to do weekly inspections of what's going on and document those. So at any time, we could, we could request those inspections.
Oh, I see, okay.
Because that's one of the condition, that they continually meet the, the state of South Dakota's storm...
So what we're doing here is we're applying the bond to the private portion if we were to do that, which would mean that they would bear the expense and that the homeowners wouldn't have to under, I mean, because, um, yeah, that would seem to me to be perhaps advisable.
I believe, Kent, you have a comment, question, statement?
Thank you, Kent Hague, again, for some, for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto. And correct me if I'm wrong, but can, I understand what the board's concern is here, to have some other ability or some other mechanism that's going to create greater scrutiny. Just so if you have a third person looking, then it, then it takes wind out of both sails that might get out of hand. And I, we would welcome that. One thing that the SWIP plan, I think, will, will do and does is that if that is not complied with, and because a lot of this, majority of this is dirt work, so it's very appropriate, that if they're out of compliance with the SWIP plan, the state and, I believe, the county would have recourse to say, that's out of compliance, get it fixed, or it's out of compliance, here's your fine, thank you very much, now fix it. So it does give them a heavy hammer. The thing about a bond is that you have to then identify the, the cost of the scope of the project. Mr. Evangelisto is an experienced, very experienced in the construction industry. He has the ability and does do his own work. So to arrive at that cost, yeah, perhaps there's, there's a way to do that. The thing about that is though, the bonds are not, not inexpensive either. And that's something that might be unusual because they're not asking for a new plat, they're not asking to create platted lots for the, that kind of, that kind of mechanism where bonds are very commonly used. But I do think that the SWIP plan is a, is a strong first step to help add scrutiny without the homeowners, excuse me, without the road district being taxed literally for it and without perhaps putting a much greater burden on the planning staff itself.
I, I don't disagree with that. The only comment I would have is there's greater state scrutiny throughout, everywhere on SWIPs. I mean, it's, it's a priority for the state. Unfortunately, the state has limited resources, too, as far as staff and ability to get out there and all the projects that are going on. And so, I mean, yes, it's a higher probably priority than it would have been ten years ago, but there, I'm not sure staffing is any greater than it was ten years ago.
So in, in summary, we would ask that a, a bond requirement not be imposed and that the SWIP program, that is to come back in the state and so forth, and those other items that can be used and tools that can be used, as are with most applicants, be held in place... and be held strongly. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Karen.
I think it might, it's appropriate now to ask about the building permit for the garage. Are there any limitations on what the applicants can do with that structure once it's built? I mean, can they make it into an event center without, without having additional parking requirements?
I guess that's a PJ question. I apologize.
So, we're, we're zone general ag, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's part of their CUP.
Right. If you'd like, I could go through the list of allowable uses or permitted uses in general agriculture.
Didn't bring my ordinance with me.
There's considerable, there's twenty-three permitted uses and thirty-one conditional uses, so.
So, a, a garage can be used for basically any of those uses?
If they're choosing to call it a garage, we would expect it to have features of a garage. If they're, we would, we ask if they're going to put any plumbing or anything inside that and that they have to get all that taken care of. Anything above and beyond that, we'd like to know about that ahead of time. But it is not uncommon for people to come in and revise building permits. It happens all the time.
Okay. I would expect then that if you guys are going to make an event center, you would revise that plan.
Well, unless there's any more comments from either planning commissioner or the floor, the planning commission, the staff's recommendation is for, well. I said if the, if the planning commission, so you don't really have a recommendation? Is that, are you recommending?
Oh, yes, the planning commission, if you approve it.
Oh, if, okay. Staff recommends approval with twelve conditions. Anyone want to enter a motion?
I, I'll make a motion for approval of the construction permit with an additional condition of a requirement for a bond.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second for approval with thirteen conditions, adding a condition for bonding requirements. I don't know if you have any recommended wording to that effect off the top of your head?
No. Do you have any that you?
Just bonding requirements in conformance of painting county ordinances.
For any control measures, stabilization and work proposed in the site plan or SWIP, because that's how it's written in here. Is that how you'd like it to read?
Could you read that again?
Yeah.
Sure, Brittany, please. To post a performance bond for any control measures, stabilization or other work proposed in the applicant's site plan or SWIP.
That meets the motioners and seconds requirements. Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two, county board report, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commissioner's recommendations from April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen planning commission meeting.
Items from the public. Any items from the public?
Yeah.
Seeing none. Items from staff, building report.
Items from staff, item A, building report, just real quick, single family homes are up fifty percent over this time last year. All of our building permits are up on about five percent over this time last year and up as far as valuation, thirteen percent.
Any questions for PJ regarding that? Item B, appeal of the conditional use permit strata bowl?
Yep. Item B, appeal of conditional use permit 1504 for strata bowl, Vacation Homes LLC, Ken and Corey Tomovic, the agent. There was a letter received from our office within the five-day appeal period for the conditional use permit, which was approved by this body. It was brought before the board of commissioners. The appellant did not show and the board of commissioners affirmed the planning commission's decision.
Okay. Steve, Vacation Home Rental Committee update.
Want to touch on it, or do you want to?
Yeah, you better do it. I forgot to bring my file.
Sure, no problem. Item C, Vacation Home Rental Committee update. Essentially, they had about nine items on the last meeting that they had, but majority of what they spoke about was what the intent was when the board of commissioners and the planning commission made the motion to have this committee formed. Essentially, it started with Deb, with the board of commissioners, right back in January. And that is going to be the bulk of what they talk about at this next meeting as well. They're going to, everybody's got copies of where the video is, where it is in the timeframe of the video, and they want to discuss basically what the intent and the depth of the review is supposed to be. They are requesting a planning commissioner be there to discuss it on behalf of the planning commission. Aside from, I know Barbara's going to be there, but.
The video, is video from the commission meeting?
Yes.
When this was reauthorized, sort of?
Yes, during the board of commissioners meeting, yep.
Okay.
County board, you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's why they want somebody from planning commission there to get your take as well.
And, and.
Put a representative to do that.
Yeah, I'm unavailable. I'm out of town that day.
When is the meeting?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. The next meeting is on May twenty-first. It was going to be every couple of weeks and then they postponed it right now to at least once, once a month.
I'll be, I'll be gone too.
Actually volunteered you were.
Thanks. May twenty-first, I'll, I'll see if my schedule can accommodate that.
Well, you can push it off to Laurie, she's not here.
Okay, what was the date on that?
Twenty-first.
Okay.
And the meeting, just be specific, May twenty-first from two to five, up in the planning department's large conference room.
And Charlie's chairing that commit, committee, right?
He is the chair.
Is Deb, who's on the committee, just for curiosity's sake?
I'm trying to go around the room, so you, well, Deb is not.
She's not?
She is not on the committee, no. You have Charlie Johnson is the chair, Rita Chapman is the secretary, no, vice chair.
Peterson is.
Jim Peterson is the secretary, Joyce Segrew, currently Jeff Segrew, but he's actually submitted a letter that he can no longer be on the committee. Corey Tomovic, Richard Breen, Patrick Breen, thank you. I'm trying to go around the table who I missed, maybe one or two.
And then you guys.
And then you as the liaison and, and us as advisors.
You and Brittany?
Huh?
You and Brittany?
No, Cassie, one, but more so for me, yep. There is a site, if you go to our webpage, the planning department's webpage, and in the list of links on the very bottom of the first group of links is Vacation Home Rentals, where minutes are posted, agendas are posted, there's a letter from Charlie that he wrote about a month ago, just to keep the public informed.
Great, thanks PJ.
Mm-hmm. Nothing further.
Okay. Items for membership.
Okay, I've got legislation that was passed this last session, this has been enrolled, signed by the governor, and this concerns our ability to talk to people about the various CUPs that come before us and other issues, and so it's important.
Yeah, George caught me after the last meeting and informed me of.
Yeah, and this was a result of discussions at that large planning meeting that we had, where were we, you were on?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And what the legislature wanted to do was remedy a problem of, that they saw of just being able to talk to people about the issues and not requiring.
Eleven oh six.
And, and I've, you know, commented too, I mean, after hearing that, I mean, I was reluctant to even make personal site visits, even if I didn't see anybody. But I mean, like, I, I still just happen to be driving there on a weekend or something like that on some of these, but I, I don't know, to me it's hard to make a call sometimes without just visually seeing it. Photos are great, you know, rapid map's a great tool, but sometimes it's just not the same as being a feet on the ground. So, I'm glad that there's some protection offered, so.
And then this next one is just an act, this is HB twelve oh one, that revises provisions regarding planning and zoning, which I think we just should be aware of what, what's in it.
And you're distributing this for information only?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Appreciate that.
Is that the one about board of adjustments and conditional use permits and all that stuff?
Oh, it's got all kinds of stuff in here. It's funny games.
Yeah. Which basically, yeah, I won't discuss it.
Anything else, Barb?
Nope.
Anything else from anyone else? If not, an entertaining motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.